Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission public, uh, remote public meeting for August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Brian Singer, Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations will now outline general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate. Ryan.
Thank you and good morning. Uh, verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your phone. Uh, if you wish to speak, you must register through the NYC Engage Portal. If you wish to access the hearing, uh, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Uh, please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline on, uh, uh, with through the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another one. Uh, the meeting ID is six, one, eight, two, three, seven, seven, three, nine, six. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that no matter how you are accessing the meeting, you must first register to speak. Those accessing the meeting online, uh, will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. When is your turn to speak? You'll be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. So listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you no longer in the meeting. Um, don't be alarmed. You'll rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called against your registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you'll be given the ability to unmute yourself and you do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. Uh, for them, those listening to the online live stream who haven't registered, uh, to speak, that decide that they wish to do so, they must first register to speak through the upcoming means page of the NYC Engage Portal. Uh, likewise, for those, uh, hearing, uh, listen to the, uh, meeting via phone and they, uh, who has decided they want to speak, they must also register to speak through the dial and participant outline that I described a moment ago. Uh, speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping in front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of ten minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Uh, be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you are watching the proceedings via live stream, that the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you'll hear an echo. Uh, if you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. And note that this remote public hearing is being recorded. We do have a few quick announcements, uh, before I hand it over to the Vice Chair. Uh, you may have noticed the City Planning Commission has a new face. Uh, the department is pleased to, uh, welcome, uh, Russ Marni Kurmani. Uh, to, uh, excuse me, Russ Mia Kurmani, who is participating in her first, uh, public hearing today. Uh, also just a note to the commissioners that regarding the Brechner sites rezoning, which is scheduled for a vote today, there was a letter, uh, that was sent out clarifying the correct number of the proposed units. Uh, with that, I will hand it over to the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, good morning and again, welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Hearing. Uh, my name is Ken Knuckles and I'm Vice Chair of the City Planning Commission. If you tuned in for the review session on Monday, you may already know that Chair Gorodnik is not in this week. So today we have six votes, including a proposal in Throgsneck that would bring approximately three hundred forty-nine two homes, one hundred sixty-eight of them affordable and ninety-nine set aside for senior housing to Bruckner Boulevard in the Bronx and the Throgsneck section of the Bronx. Three of our votes are on projects by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, which would bring fifty new affordable homes to the Bronx and one hundred sixty affordable homes to Manhattan. We also have several public hearings on projects that seek permission to create more than two thousand eight hundred new homes, including in Queens and Brooklyn. If you'd like to sign up to speak during any of the public hearings, please go to nyc.gov/engage. That's nyc.gov/engage. Okay, let's get started. Madam Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I will now call the roll. Um, I'll just note for the record, Chair Gorodnik is absent. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Bozark is absent. Uh, Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sarullo.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Edie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Here.
Commissioner Carmani.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, the August tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
On the minutes, uh, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling calendar numbers one and two, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-two, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is your report section on page five. Reports, Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three, Morris Heights NCP. Uh, CD five, C two, two, zero, three, eight, one, HAX, in the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Morris Heights NCP. For favorable report on calendar number three. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
Yeah.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number three. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number four, Morisania Open Door, CD three, C two, two, zero, three, eight, zero, HAX, in the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Morisania Open Door. For favorable report on calendar number four, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Commissioner Goodridge.
Yeah.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
Yeah.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number four. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers five and six, Brechner Sites Res zoning, CD ten. Calendar number five, C two, two, zero, 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 seven, ZMX. Calendar number six, um, N two, two, zero, 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 eight, ZRX. In the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Brechner Sites rezoning. For favorable report on calendar numbers five and six, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yeah.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
So I'd, I'd like to make a statement. I, I saw the, the document that the applicant provided indicating that more three-bedroom units would be provided. Brings down the unit, overall unit count. I will say that I'm still not, um, convinced that the zoning designation is correct. So I'm going to vote yes with the hopes that council will address this.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers five and six. Borough Queens, calendar numbers seven and eight. Eight, um, calendar number seven, CD thirteen, N two, three, zero, 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 seven, H, um, K, Q, Cambria Heights. Uh, two hundred and twenty-second Street Historic District, calendar number eight, CD, um, thirteen. And two, three, zero, 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 eight, HKQ, Cambria Heights, two hundred and twenty-seventh Street Historic District. In the matter of communications concerning the historic district designations for Cambria Heights, two hundred and twenty-second Street and Cambria Heights, two hundred and twenty-seventh Street Historic Districts. On the adoption of calendar numbers seven and eight for the referral to the City Council, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioners Sarullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yeah.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio. Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes.
Calendar numbers seven and eight have been adopted for the referral to the City Council. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers nine through twelve, uh, seven oh five, Tenth Avenue DEP Site, CD four, calendar number nine, C two, two, zero, three, four, zero, HAM. Calendar number ten, N two, two, zero, three, three, nine, ZRM, has been withdrawn. Calendar number eleven, C two, two, zero, three, three, eight, ZSM. Calendar number twelve, C two, two, zero, three, three, seven, ZSM. In the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property and special permits concerning seven oh five, Tenth Avenue DEP Site. For favorable reports on calendar numbers nine, eleven and twelve, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarullo.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Good Bridge.
Yeah.
Commissioner Karmani.
Yeah.
Commissioner Madden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers nine, eleven and twelve. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section.
Okay, thank you. Again, uh, we ask those who are testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes, after which you will be muted. Please also let me note that while we welcome the opportunity to hear your comments, we ask that courtesy and decorum be observed at all times during your testimony.
Borough Queens, calendar numbers thirteen and fourteen, forty twenty-five Crescent Street rezoning. CD one, calendar number thirteen, C two, two, zero, one, six, nine, ZMQ. Calendar number fourteen, N two, two, zero, one, seven, zero, ZRQ. Public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning forty twenty-five Crescent Street.
Okay, this is a ten-minute, uh, team presentation. Uh, the participants will be Dan Eggers, Henry Rosenwach, Andrew Rosenwach, Deidra Carson, Nora Fernandez, Noah Bernstein. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, we are, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioners. Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney from Greenberg Tarrick. Good to see you again. It's, it's been a while and good to see some new faces as well. I'm representing Crescent Street Associates LLC, owner of forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street and an affiliate of the Rosenwach Group. I will explain the proposed actions and discuss the site and context. Then Nora Fernandez from Gene Kaufman Architect will show the contemplated development. And Andrew Rosenwach will speak on behalf of ownership. Additionally, to respond to any questions you may have, I'm joined by my colleague Deidra Carson, as well as Noah Bernstein from AKRF and Henry Rosenwach from Ownership. Next slide. This is an application for rezoning from M one, two, R five B and M one, two, R five D zoning districts to an M one, two, R six A district within the existing Dutch Kill sub-district of Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District. A mandatory inclusionary housing area will also be mapped over the proposed rezoned area. And this will facilitate a new seven-story mixed-use building, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of floor area at forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street. Next slide. Forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street is on the block bounded by fortieth and forty-first avenues and Crescent Street and twenty-seventh street. Next slide. Specifically, the proposed rezoned area would be the portion of the block a hundred feet north of forty-first avenue and eighty feet south of fortieth avenue, which is now in M one, two, R five B and M one, two, R five D districts. The rezoning would rezone this area to M one, two, R six A zoning district, extending the existing M one, two, R six A zoning district immediately south, this area north, to within eighty feet of fortieth avenue. This district would continue to serve as a transition with regard to density and height in the higher-density blocks to the south, to the adjacent M one, two, R five B and M one, two, R five D districts. In addition to forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street, six smaller lots are part of the proposed rezoned area. Four of these are used for vehicle storage. One has a three-story residential building and one has a nine-story hotel, as are small portions of six other lots. Next slide. Here is an aerial image of the site and the proposed rezoned area. Next slide. The site is an approximately forty-five thousand square foot lot with approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage on Crescent Street and two hundred feet of frontage on twenty-seventh street. The site now is four one-story buildings used as office space for working, the exterminating service, a facility where the owner stores and tests his water storage and cooling tower products and a parking lot. As you will hear, the existing light industrial use will be remaining on the property as part of a mixed-use development. For a land use rationale, we believe this project is consistent with the specific purposes of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District to permit development of residential, commercial and light manufacturing uses and encourage the development of affordable housing. Uh, next slides, please. Uh, here are existing conditions shown in, uh, street-level photos of the site. Uh, next line. It's twenty-seventh street, uh, next line. Also twenty-seventh street and next slide, please. All right, and I will now turn it over to Nora Fernandez. Thank you.
Dan, um, good morning, Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioners. I don't know if you can see me. Uh, whoops.
I can hear you.
Yes, I cannot start the video. I'm sorry about that. Um, here is the original site plan and the proposed development. As you can see, there will be commercial, manufacturing and residential uses with a courtyard. Uh, start my video. Um, next slide, please. Um, in response to the community's concerns regarding loading and deliveries on Crescent Street, which has a bike lane, we have revised the illustrative site plan to include the requested loading zone on twenty-seventh street and a breezeway from the twenty-seventh street portion of the building to the Crescent Street portion. Signs with instruct deliveries to the building be made on twenty-seventh street and deliveries for residents in the Crescent Street portion of the building would be brought through the breezeway. Through department staff, the applicant team has been in contact with DOT to work on ways to ensure vehicular and bike traffic is maintained during construction. And we understand that DOT does not currently have any major concerns about the building in relation to the bike lane after opening. Next slide, please. There would be a total of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of floor area, three point nine FAR, of which five thousand would be in commercial use and twelve thousand square feet in manufacturing. And a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet, three point five FAR, would be residential. With an MIH up to three point six FAR is permitted with up to an additional zero point four FAR allowed for designated permitted industrial uses. For a total of four point zero FAR permitted. The commercial use would be either office or local retail space depending on market conditions. And the manufacturing use would be light industrial use by the owner's pipe fitting operations. This would, among other things, preserve industrial jobs. Of the residential, approximately thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet would be permanently affordable under mandatory inclusionary housing option one, which requires at least twenty-five percent of the residential floor area be affordable to households with incomes not exceeding sixty percent AMI, of which ten percent cannot exceed forty percent AMI. This translates to approximately two hundred and thirty-three residential units, of which sixty would be affordable. The original intended unit mix was about nineteen percent two and three bedrooms. But in response to the community board's request for more two and three bedrooms, the contemplated mix is now forty percent two and three bedrooms. The building design would have sixty-five feet six-story base height, then set back fifteen feet from each street and have a total height of seventy-five feet and seven stories, which is less than the eighty-five feet permitted. A, a portion fronting on Crescent Street would be fifty-five feet within twenty-five feet of the adjacent M one dash two, R five D district north of the site. A hundred and eighteen required parking spaces would be provided in the cellar, of which eighty-eight would be for the residence and thirty would be for commercial and manufacturing use, eighteen for commercial, twelve for manufacturing. Access to the building's parking would be from twenty-seventh street and loading for the manufacturing would be on Crescent Street. Here, uh, next slide, please. This is the land use diagram showing the proposed buildings in context. Uh, next slide, please, please. These are images of the proposed building from the street. The new building would create a nearly continuous street wall along each side of the street frontages. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a view from twenty-seventh street. Uh, next slide, please. And these are proposed illustrative renderings of the building, which is our design concept. Regarding the comments that the review, uh, session had about sustainability and vegetation, we want to state that we aim to be below local law ninety-seven green gas house emissions limit. We seek to meet NYC zero-waste guidelines. We have green roofs. We'll have bird-safe glass. We have high-efficiency exterior envelopes and glazing areas that are less than forty percent. And for vegetation, we're thinking native plants, grasses, grasses and trees. And thank you. And now I will have Andrew Rosenwach talk.
Good morning. My honor.
Yes.
Good morning. Good morning, Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioners. I am Andrew Rosenwach, Principal of the Rosenwach Group, which owns the site. We have been major suppliers and and above of the water tanks in the five boroughs and related services. We've been, uh, around town for about, uh, five generations in fact, and, uh, we've been, uh, a, a icon in the city. I speak today in support of my company's application for a rezoning that will permit the redevelopment of our facility at forty twenty-five Crescent Street in Long Island City, which we have owned and operated since nineteen seventy-eight. We are extremely excited about the project, which will result in a truly mixed-use development, meaning residential, commercial and manufacturing uses. The project would create new facilities for our water tank business, pipe fitting activities, and would allow our business to retain a presence in Long Island City and to be able to service thousands of customers we work with, with extreme timeliness. We basically, uh, always pull the workforce from commu-, local communities and the city. And this will allow us to maintain that presence and give that opportunity for skilled jobs. At the same time, the project will provide many other benefits, approximately six units of affordable housing and transit-oriented development only a few blocks.
That was, that was time.
Okay. So now we can go to questions from the commission. Let me just see if there are, are any.
I see your hand.
I don't, I don't, oh, yes. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, thanks so much for the presentation. This is very useful and, and thanks so much for highlighting aspects of the comments or the discussion that you, you're addressing, uh, at the moment. I wanted to follow up with two quick questions. Um, I know that, uh, it's been clear from the comments from the community board and the board president that the community facility is a community priority. Can you expand a little bit on that and specifically, um, in, inform us whether or not you're committing any specific, uh, what, what, how many square footage are you committing to community facility in the current version of the plan?
Am, am I, am I able to? I'm sorry, am I able to answer that even though I was part of the, the presentation team?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is Q and A for all of your team.
Okay, it was first time with this, with this format actually. Uh, so the, um, so Ownership will give serious consideration to including a community facility space for a local non-for-profit or, or community group. We, we've, uh, indicated to the Borough President and, um, we, we look forward to hearing from the Borough President and the community board and the, and the council member as to whether they have any community groups that are searching for space and, and Ownership will give serious considerations of providing them space.
Thanks, thanks so much for that. I, I know that this is, um, it's been underlined as a priority from the community. But do you have a sense of how much space are you considering at the point, at the moment?
As of now, we haven't finalized the, the building design. What you've seen is, is illustrative, so there's, there's no specific amount of square footage in mind. So that would come about as part of the conversation we would have with, uh, with the community.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to, uh, highlight another concern that, um, has been brought up in the comments, which in my mind connects with the previous question, which is this, um, suggestion or recommendation to, um, explore, uh, thirty, thirty percent, uh, local hiring commitment. And I'm wondering if, what's your rationale? What's, what's your response to that?
Yes, so the, the applicant's general contractor is Skiami and we understand they have extensive experience regarding participation of, of, and, of MWBEs. And they've in fact represented to Ownership that they will make best efforts to meet a target of, uh, thirty percent MWBE participation in the project.
Thank you. The, the, the other question that I have, um, has to do with, uh, the sustainability measures. And I, again, I appreciate the response as part of the presentation. I was wondering if you can expand a little bit on specific concerns that have been, um, brought up in the previous comments, including the amount and layout of vegetation, um, that is being proposed. Specifically, what are the measurements that you are taking to address, um, urban heat island effect? Uh, on one end, and then on the other, I know that you briefly mentioned that you're considering a series of interventions, uh, to be compliant with local laws. But I was wondering if you can expand a little bit specifically on, um, solar, um, and, uh, and, and green roofs, yes.
Uh, Nora, can, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the question and for allowing us to, uh, explain a bit more. Yes, the intent is to have, um, as much, um, percolation soil as we could in the courtyards and on the roofs. Uh, we are also proposing green roofs that will be vegetative and we are looking at native plantings to, you know, enhance the conditions of what is the position now of parks and the city and trying to work with, uh, uh, local, uh, vegetation. And, um, uh, we are considering having some areas of, uh, solar panels. It's just, it's too early in the process, I believe, to give you a certain percentage of how much solar is going to be on the project or how much of vegetation, but this is the intent from our side as architects.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair, can I have a quick follow-up? One last follow-up question?
Please.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, thanks for that. Uh, speaking about the courtyard, um, you remind me of another question that has come up, which is the, the lack of public access to the proposed, uh, courtyard. Can you? Can you expand a little bit, you know, what is your response to that or how are you addressing it?
Uh, may I address this, please?
Yes.
Um, while we understand the desire of the community to have access here, it isn't customary to have community access in rear yards, uh, for individual buildings. Um, this isn't a plaza, which is a bonusable amenity where public access would be required. So this is a fairly large building, and we expect that the courtyard will have heavy, heavy usage by the residents of the building. Um, and it will serve a purpose in providing them with recreational areas. So that takes, I won't say it takes a burden off of other public spaces, but it does provide a service for public, for open space for the residents of the building. Um, it's, um, beyond the purview and, and capability really, um, of this area to serve the general public.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the response and I understand that this is beyond the requirement. But given the, eh, thoughtfulness of the interventions that you're giving to improving environmental conditions and creating additional green infrastructure, I, I highly encourage you, consider eh, eh, to the extent possible, you know, creating some level of public permeability to, to these amenities.
We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Osorio. Are there any, uh, are there other questions for the team? Okay, I, I'd like to ask, uh, this question of, of Ms. Fernandez. Uh, Ms. Fernandez, I understand that the, uh, manufacturing component here would be, uh, uh, light industrial, as I understand it. Uh, but I'm wondering, would you still, uh, uh, in order to abate any noise issues, since you, this is a residential component as well, uh, would there be any particular treatment of the industrial space so as to abate any, uh, any, um, acoustical issues?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair. Um, I believe we are considering that, of course. I mean, it's early in the process, as I explained earlier, but, uh, both Ownership and us as architects would never think of doing a building that would be a nuisance for our tenants upstairs. So definitely we are considering the impacts, even though this is light manufacturing. So the expectations of sound impacts are minimal in comparison to probably the surrounding noises in that area. Uh, but yes, it's a thing that we are taking seriously and we consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, uh, from the Commissioners, uh, we can now go to, um, the, uh, speakers. Um, do I yet have the list of speakers?
Uh, there are no other speakers signed up.
No other speakers?
Yeah.
Okay, alrighty. Uh, so if there are no other speakers, uh, then we will close the hearing.
Okay, uh, Borough of Queens, calendar number fifteen, seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue rezoning, CD five, C two-two-zero-one-three-three, ZMQ. Public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue rezoning.
Okay, uh, this is a three-minute presentation. Uh, our first speaker, three minutes per speaker, I mean. Um, our first speaker is Richard Lobel.
Good morning, Vice Chair Commissioners. Uh, thank you for hearing us today. We are here for the, um, seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue rezoning. Uh, and I also wanted to, uh, join other speakers in welcoming Commissioner Kiermani, uh, to the Commission. Next slide, of course. So, um, this is a very straightforward rezoning. The rezoning area is roughly five thousand square feet. Next slide, please. Uh, this would be an amendment to, uh, alter the zoning from an existing R five district to an R five D C two-three district. Uh, this would have the primary purpose of legalizing and making conforming uh, an existing use group six veterinary medicine use, which has existed on the ground floor, uh, for roughly twenty-nine years. This is a heavily utilized, uh, facility by local residents. Um, this would also allow for the building to be expanded two stories atop the building to allow for two residential apartments, where, where it is currently intended, uh, would be housed, um, uh, workers at the existing veterinary practice. So this has been a longstanding goal of, uh, the existing practice to allow for, uh, workers to live above the, uh, the facility in order to provide, uh, twenty-four-hour care. Um, so the development has an existing one-floor, uh, medical facility for, uh, veterinary medicine, uh, would be expanded to three stories. Uh, this would also have the added effect of bringing an adjacent building into conformance and compliance, which, uh, itself has a ground-floor use group six office use. Next slide. So you can see from the zoning map that commercial overlays here in particular are well-known to the area. Uh, this is in an area where roughly four blocks on the southern portion of Metropolitan Avenue and five blocks on the northern portion are already zoned, uh, with commercial use. So as has been recognized by the Community Board, uh, the Queens Borough President, uh, and, and everyone else who's examined this, it is entirely appropriate, uh, to allow for commercial uses here. Uh, next slide. The next slide merely shows on the tax map a more focused area, which is, um, the two, uh, properties with existing ground-floor commercial uses. Uh, next slide. The next slide, uh, the area map demonstrates in full why this is entirely appropriate. There is a, uh, a, a long, a street width of a hundred feet along Metropolitan Avenue here. This is a, an existing heavily utilized commercial thoroughfare, uh, as can be seen from the area map. Uh, there are abundant commercial uses along this strip. Um, the, uh, commercial overlay here would merely be an extension of existing C two, uh, C two districts in the area. Uh, in addition, we would note that the current zoning of the site is R five, uh, and R five with community facility use would permit a two FAR. The R five D with a commercial overlay here allows for the same overall FAR, merely allowing for the specific uses that are proposed at the site. Uh, next slide, if you want to page through, there's some photographs of the area. Uh, immediately in the foreground, you can see the, um, adjacent building, which already exists at three stories. The proposed building here will be of similar height. Uh, and the, uh, proposal ends with, on the, the presentation ends with, uh, site map, area map and floor plans. Uh, so again, a very straightforward application approved unanimously by the Community Board, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lobel? I don't see any at the moment. So we'll go to our, uh, am I missing something? No?
Nope, uh, it looks like, you know, no hands raised.
Okay, uh, next speaker is Spiro, uh, Bazigos. Spiro Bazigos.
Vice Chair Spiro is the project architect, uh, and is available, uh, for questions, as is, uh, the remainder of the applicant team.
Okay, um.
At, at, at your discretion, uh, Vice Chair, you can just call the, those names if you want.
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, Robert Thomas, Amanda, uh, Ionati, and Kevin Williams. Do any of you wish to speak? All right. Are there any other speakers on this item?
Uh, there appear to be no more speakers, uh, signed up, further speakers signed up on this item.
All right, uh, then we will close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Borough of Queens, calendar number sixteen, seventy-nine eighteen one sixty-fourth Street rezoning, CD eight, C two-two-zero-four-one-four, ZMQ. Public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning seventy-nine eighteen one sixty-fourth Street rezoning.
Okay, uh, the first speaker looks familiar. I think it's, uh, Richard Lobel.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, so again, we have a three-minute presentation. Uh, I'm joined by Amanda Ionati from my office, as well as Dr. Michael Cantius, the project applicant, uh, Victor Falletti, the project architect, and Kevin Williams of Equity Environmental. Um, so we've got a rezoning here, seventy-nine eighteen one sixty-fourth Street. You can see the building, uh, which is a development site before you. Um, that is a four thousand square foot lot with a roughly four thousand square foot building. Um, Dr. Cantius, who is with us today, uh, operates a medical laboratory on the second floor and has done so without incident since nineteen ninety. Next slide. So this rezoning is, uh, very straightforward rezoning and merely allows for an existing C one-three overlay to be changed to a C two-three overlay on nine full lots and portions of four lots. Uh, and what this enables, in short, is to allow for Dr. Cantius to occu- to occupy and use the space for his existing use group nine A medical laboratory. Uh, I would note that this is the type of laboratory, uh, at which, um, offensive noise, vibration, smoke, or other particular matter is not permitted. Uh, this is a much more routine medical laboratory. Dr. Cantius, um, processes, uh, tissue samples here to, uh, examine for evidence of cancer. Next slide. So what would be permitted here, uh, again, Dr. Cantius acquired the site in nineteen ninety, over thirty years ago. Currently, it is improved with ground floor and cellar use group six B offices occupied by a Queens Hospital WIC program. And the second story is occupied by Dr. Cantius's, uh, medical research laboratory. I note the questions from the review session, uh, were centered primarily around environmental issues, uh, and, um, Kevin Williams will be available to answer those, uh, as, as raised by the Commissioners. So the proposed rezoning here would again facilitate the legalization of this existing non-conforming use group nine A use. Next slide. Uh, so again, to note, we're on the corner of Union Turnpike and one sixty-fourth. This is a, a very busy area. Uh, both of these streets are extra wide streets at, um, a hundred and forty and a hundred and twenty feet. Um, and, uh, next slide. The next slide demonstrates merely the, the focus of the area. Again, uh, the development site in red, uh, with the rezoning area, uh, bending around towards Union Turnpike. Uh, we would note on the zoning map, again, we are at the intersection of two wide streets. Uh, next slide, please. And I think perhaps best seen on the area map. Um, so i- it's considered to be a benefit to allow for, uh, use groups seven, nine, fourteen, twelve, similar uses, which would not otherwise exist in the C one district. So there's already an existing C two district to the north of the site. You can see that three blocks to the north. So it's not a district which is unknown to the area, but again, allows for things like this medical lab, uh, and other use group not uses. Um, so with that, uh, again, the photographs and plans are attached. Uh, and we, uh, are hopeful that the Commission will approve this application, and we're happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Lobel or members of his team? Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles. Um, I was wondering if, I think the, the applicant said that you would expand on some of the, um, uh, concerns or questions that were raised regarding the environmental concerns? Is this a good opportunity to that? Yeah.
Yeah, I would, um, if, if permitted, I would defer to Kevin Williams of Equity Environmental for that discussion.
Hi, um, Kevin Williams, um, uh, Principal Planner at Equity Environmental. We prepared the environmental assessment statement, and I understand, um, that the comments, uh, from the Commission, uh, primarily ranged on two issues. Uh, one was, uh, previous, uh, fire department, um, compliance issues, um, and the other is related to, um, some testimony, I think, that came out of the Community Board regarding Envirofacts, uh, database report on the facility. So on the first matter, regarding the fire department, um, there was an inspection, uh, related to the storage of material that was used to process the histopathology, uh, slides. Um, and so there are var- variety chemicals that are, that are used at a facility like this, um, in order to bind tissue and blood samples, um, as well as obviously chemical reactions that are needed to identify, uh, the presence of, of cancers or other, um, uh, medical conditions in these slides. And this is stored in a, uh, these, uh, materials are stored in, in a sealed, uh, storage, uh, location on site. And, and obviously, how those are stored and processed and removed is important in related to its, um, the facility's Department of Health permit, which it has been permitted, um, for the entirety of, of, of the lab's use. Um, and so those, those, um, concerns from DOT have been, uh, resolved and my understanding, um, or sorry, with the fire department have been resolved. And my understanding is that, you know, once, uh, a new specific occupancy is issued, that, that obviously, that that would be subject to compliance with the fire department. But those discussions have already been had, and my understanding that there's an agreement in place. Um, and everything has been remedied to date. Um, but obviously, as, um, if the use were, uh, to be legalized, um, it would be subject to, to those agreements that have been reached with the fire department. But my understanding, and I believe, um, Mr. Lobel's office has submitted, uh, the information regarding the, the cure to the fire department, um, concerns. Um, and obviously, we'll, we'll, if there are more questions on that matter, we can have, uh, Richard or Amanda to weigh in on those, but those have been in fact cured. Um, now regarding the matter related to the Envirofacts database, which I think has caused some confusion, um, related to how this facility is permitted, um, the information contained in that report. Um, and as in the notes that I believe were forwarded from, um, Sheldon Lobel PC, um, were basically, uh, uh, an explanation of this database and a characterization of the facility, um, as, uh, this database basically provides, um, um, a compliance summary. So Envirofacts database, um, which identifies that this is a large source, um, hazardous, um, waste disposal facility, that's a gross characterization. So obviously, you know, the, the, um, any, any time that you have a laboratory, anytime you have a hospital, uh, in the fact, the hospital, it's about a quarter of a mile down the street, has the same Envirofacts permit. Um, in the process of disposing of medical waste, um, you have to have a permit by the Department of Health from the Wadsworth Center, um, from the state of New York, as, um, the Sephora Laboratories has. And in the process of that, um, that's, um, sort of jointly managed by DEC. Um, the EPA, the concern regarding whether or not this is an EPA permit, it is not. Envirofacts is a database, uh, that has, uh, been around for a long time, that basically, um, contains all permitting data from anything that's subject to regulatory land use permits that relate to human health. And in this case, because, uh, one of the elements in, in the, in the DOH permit is how you handle and receive, um, such materials in order for the lab to operate, they need to have a licensed Carter that removes this, uh, this material. They need to make sure it's stored correctly, um, and, um, and they need to make sure whatever compliance matters are related to the operational laboratory are in order. And so that's all the Envirofacts database does, is indicate that there's a permit present for, um, the storage of medical, uh, uh, materials, the, the storage of the materials that are needed to process, um, the, uh, the, the slides and the, and the histopathology laboratory. And, and basically, it provides, um, a history of the biannual, um, uh, uh, site visits that are done by DEC. And that's simply all that is a record of. And it, and as the Envirofacts database shows, there are no existing compliance issues. Laboratory, um, is in compliance with the requirements of the Department of Health. Um, and those, so those are, I can, any other questions for that? Sorry, there's, you know, a lot of, uh, some moving pieces here and trying to just clarify, you know, how this information, um, you know, came to the City Planning Commission's, uh, attention.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Vice Chair Knuckles, can I ask a follow-up question?
Please, yes.
Thank you, yeah. I, I really appreciate the, the response and considering the, and addressing the questions and concerns that have come up during the process. Uh, at the review session, I raised another question, which is, uh, related with the E-designations that have been placed for the, for the lots, uh, immediately adjacent. And so, eh, which doesn't include the, your property, but I, but I, but I'm wondering, you know, whether there's gonna be a need for an additional designation to address, um, any concerns? And/or, uh, I wanted to know what are the, what was the nature of those E-designations? Whether they've been addressed and what are the implications for the rezon?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Sorry, I forgot that matter. So the E-designations are, are present, I believe, on the former gas station site, which is now a three-story commercial building. which is now a three-story commercial building on a lot, I think it's fifty-three, sorry, at one sixty-two twenty Union Turnpike, Lot fifty-three, and the adjacent, a couple of adjacent sites. So those came about from the two thousand and six Jamaica Hills Hillcrest rezoning. And I took a good time to, to review those. And my firm also does a lot of E-designation work with OER. So this, the E-designations here that were placed, and the way that E-designations are placed in a rezoning process is, and it's explained in that environmental assessment document for what was a city planning sponsored area-wide rezoning, is, you know, they have a lot of properties here and they have to ask themselves, you know, this was an R-five-D and a C-one-two to a C-one-three rezoning. And in this case, only a sliver of our lot is, was changed from the, what's the existing designation on site to an R-five-D. So the only thing that impacted our lots and the adjacent lots is this change from a C-one-two to a C-one-three. And in the course of doing that, what planning staff at the city does is they, they ask, okay, what would be induced to be developed right from this? And the criterion that they put forward in the environmental assessment was buildings of a certain age and the size of the lots and whether or not the, the reduction in parking requirements, which is merely a change from one to three hundred to one to four hundred. And they also, I think, shortened up the zoning district in that rezoning from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet of depth of the overlay. And basically, what they did is, and when they, if a site is considered soft, then that, the idea is there could be an in-ground disturbance, and that's when they place an E-designation. And so our site, in both our rezoning and the two thousand and six rezoning, was not considered to require an E-designation. And the, and two thousand and six, the rationale was our building was built in nineteen eighty-three, whereas the adjacent buildings were built in the twenties and thirties and were in a less, you know, modern state of repair. And in addition, one of the other criteria in that two thousand and six EIS that was EAS that was done was whether or not the use was unique, you know, cannot, you know. So what you have adjacent to our site are sort of like dry cleaners, local retail that kind of swaps in and out. So basically, the way the two thousand and six rezoning presumably looked at, at Dr. Cantius's site was that it was, A, a new building, and two, the medical laboratory use was unique. And so they did not therefore place an E-designation on the site at that time. For our rezoning, the rationale why an E-designation was not placed is because this is simply a legalization. And if there's no in-ground disturbance, the building is going to be used. There's no breach of the foundation. They don't place an E-designation on the site. And this is not my determination, it's just standard practice in the way that you evaluate that in the hazardous materials chapter. Now, in terms of-
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I just want to see, has your question been answered?
The one I- Sorry.
Yes, it has, thank you.
I just want to quickly say the status of those E-designations. So the corner lot that had the gas station, where a new commercial building was built, that site was remediated, remediated. There have been no new developments on any of the other E-designated lots. So if those did re, have to redevelop or did redevelop, they would have to remediate.
But, but just to clarify, so you just, that last part, just to make sure I understood what you said at the end. Your rationale as compared to a two thousand and six rezoning, which, you know, didn't find the need for any designation in your lot, is basically still stands. You're, you do not see the need for any designation there because there's not going to be any ground disturbance. Now, if it would be redeveloped, what type of remediate? There wasn't, there wouldn't, at this point, we don't anticipate the need for additional remediation, correct?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Other questions? For any of the team members by the commission? Are there any other questions? I don't see any. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this item? If not, the hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
From Brooklyn, calendar numbers seventeen through twenty. Livonia four, CD sixteen, calendar number seventeen, C-two-two-zero-four-two-seven-H-A-K. Calendar number eighteen, C-two-two-zero-four-two-eight-H-U-K. Calendar number nineteen, C-two-two-zero-four-two-nine-Z-M-K. Calendar number twenty, N-two-two-zero-four-three-zero-Z-R-K. Public hearing in the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property, and an amendment to an urban renewal plan, zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning-
Concerning Livonia four.
Having some audio issues there.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking for the speakers list.
Do you not have it? Sure, I can call the speakers for you if you'd like. I have it here.
All righty, proceed, thank you.
Okay. So we have a ten-minute team presentation. And the speakers are a part of that. Michael Sandler, Jocelyn's Garancini, Lori Garvin, Amy Pivak, Hannah Burdi, David Downs, Brian Loughlin, and Jonathan Bootler.
Is there a Hannah Burdi as well?
Yeah, Hannah Burdi, yes.
Okay, now I have it, okay.
Now you have it, okay.
Okay, Mr. Sandler and team.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Amy Pivak, and I'm here representing the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development this morning. Thank you so much for having us here to present this proposal for a truly transformative project on three, on four sites along Livonia Avenue in Brownsville. Overall, this proposed project will provide approximately four hundred and ninety-eight affordable housing units to folks at a range of incomes, including supportive and senior housing, and commercial and community facility spaces to respond to the themes of healthy living and food systems. To facilitate the project, HPD requests the following actions: a rezoning from R-six and R-six-C-two-four to R-seven-two-C-two-four, a zoning text amendment to MAP and MIH area, urban development action area designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned land, and an amendment to the Brownsville Two Urban Renewal Plan to change the land use designation of three of the sites from commercial to residential. And we'll go into more detail on those actions later in the presentation. So given the range of programs anticipated on these sites, we have a large team here assembled to move this project forward. And that includes Radsden Development, the Brownsville Partnership, Catholic Charities, and SEO Family of Services, as well as MAP, Acreman, and C&amp;B Consulting. Next slide, please. This project is a result of collaborative community process that started in twenty sixteen with residents and community partners that led to the development of the Brownsville Plan. Following this, HPD released a series of RFPs to meet the community's priorities, including this site, Site C, for healthy living and food systems. And we'll get into how each of these sites supports the goals of the plan and RFP in the following slides. Next slide, please. So the development team partners have committed with the city to continued outreach in Brownsville after they were awarded this RFP. This slide highlights the continuous outreach and community engagement that we've, that have included a series of public forums, the Hope Summits, driveway meetings, and door-to-door outreach. We do understand as a team that there have been concerns with communication about encroachments on city property, as expressed at the community board meeting and borough president hearing. This summer, HPD Property Management has been going door-to-door to meet with neighbors to discuss these encroachments on a case-by-case basis. We recognize the need for continuous engagement with our neighbors as this project moves towards construction. We have had and commit to continue having collaborative conversations to resolve these encroachment issues. Conversations with some of the property owners directly affected have progressed since the Borough President Hearing, and we're happy to further address this during the Q and A. Next slide, please, and I will be handing it off to Jackie at this point.
Thanks, Amy. Good morning, Commissioners. Livonia Avenue, where all four of the proposed developments are located, is the main thoroughfare in the surrounding area. And the land uses are characterized by mixed-use residential and commercial uses. Livonia four consists of the four project sites within two project areas that are adjacent to the elevated three-line that runs along Livonia Avenue. Project Area One is bounded by Livonia Avenue to the north, Powell Street to the east, Mother Gaston to the west, and Riverdale Avenue to the south. To the north of Project Area One, you will see the Nycha Van Dyke, One and Two Houses, Tilden Houses, and Brownsville Houses built in the nineteen fifties and sixties, which are more tower-in-the-park, ranging from six to twenty-five stories. And to the south, the two-story Nehemiah Homes built in the nineteen eighties. Next slide, please. Project Area Two is five blocks west of Project Area One and is bounded by Livonia Avenue, Thomas Boylan, Amboy Street, and Riverdale. Development Site C-four sits within Project Area Two. And to the west and north of this product area are the Marcus Garvey Village twenty-eighteen rezoning and has since seen significant new residential construction. North of Site C-four is the major public park facility, which includes a public pool and active recreation areas known as Betsy Head Park, which is a ten-and-a-half acre park. Also, the Thomas Boylan Community Garden is located at the intersection of Livonia and Thomas Boylan Street. The area is well-served by public transportation with the elevated three trains stopping at Saratoga Avenue, Rockaway, and Junia Street, immediately north of Site C-one, and the yellow train stopping at Livonia and Van Cinderin, just two blocks east of Site C-one. The B-fourteen and B-sixty bus stops also stop nearby to Project Areas One and Two. Next slide, please. As you can see from the existing conditions, all four of the sites are vacant and historically city-owned. However, Site C-three does include one privately-acquired tax lot by Catholic charities. And next slide, please. So just to discuss the overall community benefits that the project aims to achieve, these are the four pillars that the team has recognized: housing affordability, economic opportunity, community empowerment, and health and wellness. It represents the city's efforts and investments to transform these long vacant, underutilized sites with a public-private partnership that will develop approximately five hundred affordable housing units that hits a range of housing programs that the city provides, including for families, seniors, and supportive housing with services. Livonia Four also provides facilities to support community health, including fresh food, education, physical activity, youth development, and senior care. It will provide a variety of open spaces, both public and private, and recreation building spaces to align with the neighborhood vision and goals around creating more equitable health outcomes for local residents through improved access to quality amenities and social programming in the Brownsville community. I will now turn over to Brian Loughlin, who will discuss the urban planning rationale and get into more of the specifics of each of the, the programs for each site. Thank you. Next slide.
Thanks, Jackie. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to present this project to you. And welcome to Commissioner Kermani, where we're thrilled to be your first public hearing. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the building and urban design approach that we applied to all four buildings, and then I'll talk very briefly about what's happening in each one of the buildings. We really focused on the RFP objectives that were established from the Brownsville Plan of promoting an active mixed-use corridor. We took full advantage of the opportunity of having four different sites to really mix up the different types of housing that were being provided to the different populations that were being served and the different community benefits that were being provided in each one of those buildings. And we tried to use strategic adjacencies with other things going on in the neighborhood to, to, to really kind of activate the Livonia corridor. If we can go to the next slide, please. So each one of the buildings has a different way of, of meeting the different community benefits that Jackie just outlined. But in kind of a quick highlights for each building, C-one has a ten thousand square foot rooftop farm. It has a supermarket and a local retail space at the ground floor and two hundred and twenty-five units of multifamily housing. Next slide, please. C-two, which is immediately across the street from C-one, is a, has eighty units of supportive housing with onsite supportive services, a family support center at the ground floor, and a job readiness training center also to be provided at the ground floor of this building. So it would be open to the entire community. Next slide, please. C-three, which is just down the block from C-one and C-two, is our senior building. This building is, has a hundred and thirty-nine units of housing affordable to seniors, eighty-five hundred square foot senior center, and it has a variety of open spaces, including a large rear yard and a publicly accessible pedestrian plaza at the front of the building, which will be designed utilizing a community charade process with members of the Brownsville neighborhood. Next slide. C-four is the last building and is a little bit down the road, but still in Livonia and directly across from Betsy Head Park. So that made it a prime candidate for a twenty-five thousand square foot youth recreation center, which will be programmed in such a way to complement all the great outdoor activities across the street in Betsy Head Park. In addition to this youth recreation center, it has multiple levels of accessible outdoor space for residents and then a fifty-four, fifty-four units of multifamily housing. Next slide, please. So with that, I turn it back over to Jackie, who can summarize the land use actions.
Great, yeah, so I know Amy highlighted the actions at the beginning of the presentation, but just to walk you through more specifically, we have a rezoning, MIH text amendment, UDOT, and disposition of city-owned property and amendment to the urban renewal plan. Happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. See if there are questions from the commission? Are there?
See a hand up.
Right, right.
No, sorry.
Commissioner Osorio.
I think Commissioner Kermani heard her hand up first.
Yep, she does. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Commissioner Osorio. Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles. Thank you for the presentation to the whole team. So just can you talk, can you talk a little bit more about the mitigation of the encroachment issues with the Nehemiah Homes?
Yeah, I would be happy to speak to that. My name is Michael Sandler. I'm an assistant commissioner at HPD. So, you know, first, at HPD, I want to acknowledge the leadership and investment of Nehemiah homeowners who long ago led the conversion of rented land into affordable homeownership and whose investment in this community really led, led the foundation of this investment in transforming city land. So on any site that has been vacant for a long time, it's pretty common for there to be minor encroachment issues, especially from fences and walls. On this project, we have four sites and twelve neighboring properties, so that there are some encroachments where fences are not in the exact right place where you, you know, want to see them at the property line. Regarding the Nehemiah homeowners, there are five Nehemiah Homes that are adjacent to these sites. Three of those have or had minor encroachments from fences or sheds. One of those has already been resolved. The two remaining are adjacent to Site C-one and are ranged from around eight inches to around five feet. These are, are very minor. We, we are very confident in being able to resolve these. We are directly in touch with the owner of one of these two sites and are reviewing some materials that she sent to us and are hoping to speak to the other owner soon. We've contacted them. We really hope to have a collaborative conversation with each homeowner. In the case of a fence or shed that needs to be moved, we think this can be done at little or no cost to the homeowner and with very little impact on the livability of their property owner, or of their property. In fact, we think it could improve livability of these properties because it would result in, you know, a new fence and at the end of the day, a better maintained property next door with onsite building maintenance, security landscaping, and new lighting. So I, I believe I answered the question, but I'm happy to answer any follow-ups.
Thank you.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just to build on the previous point, you know, and thanks for highlighting this as part of the presentation that HPD is knocking door-to-door, that you're doing outreach to try to address the remaining encroachment issues, but, you know, I just want to highlight that there's been significant controversy around the, the way in which, the process in which this conversation has been held. So I'm wondering if you can- So I'm wondering if you can explain, in addition to individual outreach, have there been meetings? Have you been working with the community groups? Which, there's a strong legacy here of community organizing. To what extent, can you describe the outreach process regarding your handling of the issue?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll say first that I, I don't think that this is the shining example of us handling an issue like this. We've had significant turnover on our team over the last few years, and this project has progressed slowly at times, and I think that has caused some real delays in getting back to people and some inconsistency in the way that we communicated to the adjacent homeowners. So I think, you know, we've apologized in public forums to this, you know, I apologize directly to homeowners as well. We, we've sent letters to the homeowners about the encroachments, asking them to correct them, and we've included our contact information. In twenty nineteen, HPD's property management team visited the area and spoke with homeowners. At that time, the conversations were amicable. And then last year, we had a series of public forums about the project that included representatives from the homeowners association and the homeowners. I think one of the challenges that's happened is that HPD and the project team has been hesitant to speak at a public forum about, about issues that impact an individual's property. And so I think that that's led to a lot of distrust between, between HPD and some of, you know, the homeowners association and some of the neighbors. So, you know, I'll acknowledge some challenges on our team. Again, stemming from the long timeline and the transitions that we've had. I think that we're, we're on the right footing now. I hope that we're on a better footing than we have been in the past. And, and as I said, these are, these are really minor encroachments when it relates to the Nehemiah homeowners. And really, I don't think that they are going to cause significant issues for the homeowners. Really believe they could be resolved amicably, and again, at little or no cost to the homeowners.
Thank you for your response, and I, I do believe that, given the, the presentation and what you've discussed today, these disagreements can be resolved, and I really encourage you to take on those additional steps that you mentioned, specifically highlight the opportunity here to really build on the legacy of the Brownsville Plan and engage as many organizations as possible, and really making sure that this, this conversation, you know, can be addressed and doesn't jeopardize the Livonia Four project. I have another question, Vice Chair, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. Yeah, this, the other question is about the fifteen accessory parking units that are being proposed, which the review session has clarified, they're related with the supermarket, not with, they're not intended for the residents. But, you know, this is an area that has a robust public transportation system, and hearing that, you know, this is really just for the supermarket, I'm wondering if you can explain a little bit the rationale for this, and whether or not, you know, there could be a more innovative ways of, of really planning for this land. I mean, this is a public land, and, you know, this is a neighborhood that requires as much public investment as possible and creating more accessory parking lots. I'm wondering if that's the best use for that.
Yeah, I'm Brian Lachlan. I'm with the Architect and Planners, happy to answer that question. We are not required to, to provide that parking. As, as you mentioned, it's, it's very transportation-rich, but through the public engagement process that we, we outlined as part of our presentation, the issue of parking, especially around some of the commercial spaces that we're going to include at the ground floor. C one kept coming up, and it was something that frankly, residents kept asking for over and over again. And so it was, it came out of those conversations and the request of, of, of community residents for some parking to be provided in connection with that space. As part of that process, we also looked at potentially including parking in the three other buildings and came to the conclusion that it was just, one, cost prohibitive, and two, not, as you say, not the best use of those spaces. C one has a pretty substantial footprint, so it was really seen as the only place that we had any opportunity to include parking, and, and we included it below grade so that it would not interfere with some of the other uses. But that's sort of the pathology of how we got to those spaces in that one building.
You're muted, our Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, I was just saying that I appreciate the response and specifically appreciate the fact that, you know, you're testifying that this is in response to a community request. It's just, I just encourage you to, or all of us really, to think about, how do we really take advantage of public transit, transportation, and really think about better ways of, of addressing this dilemma? Because, you know, in areas where the infrastructure exists, we can do better.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners Marine and then Commissioner Gold.
Thank you, Chair. So Adam, Michael, a pleasure to see you. I want to go back to one minute to the, to the encroachment. What, what type of, if any, assistance would the city offer? I mean, look, we have to understand that the city's ability to build out these lots has been complicated throughout the years, you know, many lots. And some homeowners, either because of a bad survey or because they may have wanted to take those five feet and beautify their garden or extend their garden or even put concrete down and a fence, right? They've, they've invested their time and money. Whether or not it was right is a different issue, right? What type of assistance would the city try to offer those folks to appease them into making sure they can move their property lines back to where they belong?
So, so specifically regarding the Nehemiah homeowners, you know, we had initially reached out in twenty nineteen asking for the fences to be moved. We, we now would like to have a direct conversation with the homeowners and think that we could accomplish potentially, if, if we have a collaborative relationship with the homeowners, we feel that we can likely accomplish moving the fence to where it needs to be as part of the construction process, and so that would not necessitate the homeowners necessarily moving the fences themselves. As I said, we have twelve, twelve neighbors, only five of whom are Nehemiah homeowners, so there are some other encroachments on other sites that we do feel are important to be addressed in advance. But regarding the Nehemiah homeowners, we, we think that this could likely be accomplished as part of the construction process where the homeowners would not themselves need to do the work or hopefully.
Correct, but then the project would absorb any cost. So I, I understand, Michael. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gold?
Hi, thank you, Vice Chair. So obviously, not to belabor the point, because I think you've handled that well. It's just obviously, I think what you're getting from this side is certainly, given how important this project is, certainly wouldn't want it to be derailed by some other issues that can be dealt with easily. I guess just if you can go back to, how many of the encroachments are just fences? How many, you know, basically, I guess, just trying to get a sense for how significant the work could be to just get that all resolved?
So, so regarding the Nehemiah homeowners where there are encroachments, those are fences and sheds. So they're not, you know, they don't impact the homeowner, the homes themselves. As I said, we have some other encroachments that are, that are not fences and sheds, but that we are having corrective conversations with those neighboring property owners and have not become, you know, as, as critical issues in the public conversation as the Nehemiah homeowners.
Got it, got it. And those, I mean, in those cases, those are more significantly overbuilt? Or is it really?
No, sorry, none of the, none of the, none of the encroachments involve actual buildings. They are all fences, sheds, retaining walls, things like that. So they're, they're all things that can, can be resolved through the construction process or through, you know, a conversation.
Got it, got it. Yeah, well, well, sounds very manageable and also encouraged to hear that there perhaps is a path forward to help some of these folks get it resolved during the construction project. So as I say, yeah, I certainly would not want this to get in the way of what seems to be such an important and such a terrific project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie?
Oh, thank you. On, on Site C three, there's a landscaped activity space, and a question had come up in review as to the nature of that space. Was it publicly accessible or is it just part of the senior center? How's it to be programmed and landscaped? Could you speak briefly to that?
Sure. Commissioner David Downs, I appreciate your question. On behalf of Catholic Charities, we are committed to providing this as publicly accessible space that we will maintain in perpetuity with our ownership and maintenance and management of the building as a whole. As Brian had mentioned in the overview of C three, we are looking forward to a full community charrette or sort of visioning session sort of once we get out of ULP. The idea was, you know, there's been a lot of sort of churn on the encroachment issues, and we wanted to have a focus on the visioning and the opportunity for the site there. So look forward to that coming up post-ULP with the community input.
That's true, because this is a neighborhood that lacks good public open space of any sort, so I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernie. Are there other questions from the Commission?
Yes, Vice Chair, if I may, just ask one other question.
Thank you.
So just because you, you mentioned the charrette, and I know this may be more of a question to, to HPD, but given what I know about Brownsville over the years and the, the real desire for a grocery store, I mean, there are grocery stores in, in Brownsville that have, throughout the years, provided substandard produce, meat, services. Will the grocery store and be part of the charrette process? And will residents have, some say, will there be some sort of co-governance decision process or democratic decision-making process where governance, where residents might weigh in on the vendor or how that space would be best for them?
Hi, so I'm Hannah Burday. I'm with Radson Development, where the designated developer for C one. Regarding the supermarket, at this point in time, it's, it's too early to have a commitment from a specific tenant, but throughout our community visioning meetings that we've had, we've had a lot of feedback from the community regarding the type of grocery store that they're looking for and the types of goods that they're looking to purchase. And I will echo what you said regarding the desire to have more fresh, healthy foods, and that's the type of grocery store that we will be focused on. You know, that's an important element of the project overall, focusing on healthy, living, healthy lifestyles. And as we move, you know, closer to the time of actually beginning the construction on the project, that's closer to when we'll have conversations with potential tenants. You know, that'll be an important element of the, the types of tenants we're looking for.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Commission? I take one last look. I don't think I see any.
I don't see any further questions here.
Other public speakers, Ryan?
There are two public speakers so far signed up that you, like I could call. They should be appearing on your screen now. You have Stephanie Roberts.
Stephanie Roberts, to be followed by Keith Little. Ms. Roberts, are you there? Yes, we have Ms. Roberts.
Hi, good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I am one of the homeowners that's adjacent to the project that's, the one, the development for, sorry, for the, for the first building that's being built. I'm one of the homeowners. I wanted to speak today to address that HPD hadn't been in contact with us formally up until the ULP meeting that was done back early in, early July. So I know that Michael explained that livability would be better off that we change our fence back where the line would be permitted, but the thing is that livability for us would be to keep our fence line where it's been. See, Nehemiah has had these homes built over fifty years ago, so these fences were built during that timeframe. And so we have had, my husband and I have owned this home for over twenty years. And so for us to now move that fence line back when we've been keeping up with this property for all this time, it's a disservice to us. I think that HPD should work better with us so that we can keep our fence line. See, our fence is beautiful. We've already restructured our fence. We don't need a new fence or them to provide us with a new fence in order to make our homes more beautiful. We love the fact that, you know, they're building a new building and all these overgrown trees will no longer be there and that people will be able to have homes, affordable homes. But at the same time, it should not be a disservice to us. We should be able to keep our fence lines where they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Let me see if there are any questions for you. Are there any questions for Ms. Roberts? I don't see.
Commissioner Marine has his hand up?
I do have a question, Chair. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Ryan. Ms. Roberts, I have a question for you. And I, I realize that your statement was that the homes have been there for fifty years, and you just bought twenty years ago. You do have a closing survey, and your survey would indicate where your property line is. So I would suggest that you present that to HPD and to anyone else that's in question, because, you know, the bottom line here is, and we all know this, you, you, once, once you pass ten years, you know, it's, it's, you, you have possession, you have adverse possession. And unfortunately, that's what the city's dealing with in these situations. So I would just suggest you have all your documents in order and then speak to Michael and team and come to some amicable resolution.
Absolutely. I do have that. Actually, HPD sent me the copy of it, so I do have it, and I'll definitely turn it back into them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Roberts? Don't believe I see any. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Our next speaker is Keith Little. Mr. Little?
Yep, good morning, and, and thanks for the time. Hopefully you guys can hear me. My name is Keith Little. I'm president and CEO of SEO Family of Services, but I'm also a board member of the Brownsville Partnership, so obviously there's an investment here. For those of you who are not familiar with SEO, SEO is one of the largest human services providers in the state of New York. We provide an array of services: education, community wellness, preventive and foster care, youth justice services, housing services, and supports for the intellectually and developmentally disabled. We have been a part of the Brownsville community since the nineteen eighty's. We operate about fifteen programs in the community of Brownsville, so obviously there is a significant investment. We're also one of the backbone, one of, one of two backbone organizations for the United for Brownsville Initiative, which focused on social, emotional, and language skill development for families and children ages zero to three. One of the challenges that we see, being a human services provider, is with transition age youth and young adults and providing services for them. Obviously, being in this business, I see a need in New York City for affordable housing for young families and youth transitioning from child welfare and homeless services into adulthood. It's always been a challenge. I also see a need to supplement housing with opportunities to develop workforce skill sets that will assist the individuals we service, but also communities that we service in. In my opinion, the Livonia Two project provides a unique opportunity, an essential opportunity to provide eighty units of affordable supportive housing, also family support services, healthy alternatives, and with additional, and I underline this, with additional supports from New York City government and private investors, the establishment of a much-needed career readiness and development center that would benefit both the residents of the building that we're a part of, but also would benefit the community of Brownsville. I think the need to provide supportive housing and other services that assists individuals in need, as well as focus on uplifting and empowering communities of color, is essential, in my opinion. I, I fully endorse C two and the Livonia Project, and I thank you guys for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Questions for Mr. Little? I don't see any. Thank you for your testimony, sir. Are there any other speakers present who would like to speak on this item? If not, the hearing is closed. Thank you.
Sarah Brooklyn, calendar numbers twenty-one and twenty-two, fifteen seventy-one McDonald Avenue, CD twelve, calendar number twenty-one, C two one zero two. CD 12, calendar number 21, C 210230, BMK, calendar number 22, N 210231, ZRK, public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1571 McDonald.
Okay, this is a team presentation of 10 minutes. I see the developer, 1571 Development LLC, the architecture firm, Land Use Council of Cozen O'Connor and the Environmental Studies Corporation. Please proceed.
Sorry, it looks like my team members are missing. Ken Fisher and Sergey Ryback, I think, are waiting to be let in.
Do you want to start?
We have, we have Sergey. There's Ken. I'll.
Sergey is going to kick us off, so just give him a second.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me or can you see me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Not sure. Can you guys see me as well?
Yes, you can see.
How is everyone? First and foremost, I would like to thank all the commissioners and city planning for hearing our application. I'm Sergey Ryback. I'm one of the principals of the Development LLC, 1571 Development LLC. We are the owner of the property at 1757 McDonald Avenue. Currently, we are redeveloping the majority of the property into a world-class spa facility. We've been developing this project since 2017 and we are approximately, I would say, two months away from a soft opening, from a soft launch. We actually just recently passed our construction final inspection, which was not an easy task, but but we did it. Approximately two years ago, our adjoining lot, which was a furniture store, closed its doors and this allowed us to contact our architect and he proposed a possibility of rezoning the property to add much-needed housing to the, to the block. Since the majority of the block, we occupied the, a substantial portion of the block, we thought it would be a very good opportunity to pursue this application and to bring much-needed housing that we felt the community needs. I would like to introduce you other members of our team, Rachel Sockle and Ken Fisher. And thank you again for the opportunity and we will address any questions that you may have. Thank you, commissioners.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel Skoll and I'm an associate at Cozen O'Connor. We're land use council for the applicant. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning areas on the east side of McDonald Avenue between avenues M and N. The development site is just north of the entrance to the avenue and subway station and the station itself, as well as the above-grade F train tracks are adjacent to the site. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning area is in Brooklyn Community Board 12 on the border of Midwood and Borough Park within the Special Ocean Parkway District, which will not be affected by the proposed rezoning. We are proposing to rezone McDonald Avenue block from, from its current R5 C23 to a C44L district, which is an R7A equivalent. The C44L zoning district is specifically tailored for commercial corridors featuring elevated subway lines and is intended to ensure adequate light and air reach the sidewalk below the elevated rail line by establishing an appropriate distance between a building's upper floors and the tracks. As part of this application, we are also proposing to remove the C23 commercial overlay from the southwest corner of Avenue M and East Second Street to bring zoning in line with the existing uses. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would allow us to enlarge the existing spa building that Sergey mentioned on the development site, which is Lot 6C outlined here in red. The remaining sites within the rezoning area are individually owned and we are not aware of any redevelopment plans on those sites that would stem from this rezoning. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the spa. This is actually a photo that was just taken. As Sergey mentioned, construction was just completed and this spa is about 22,400 square feet. It was built pursuant to a 2018 BSA Physical Culture Establishment Special Permit. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would allow us to enlarge the spa building to create an approximately 143,700 square foot or 4.58 FAR mixed-use building with approximately 116,000 square feet of residential use and approximately 27,700 square feet of commercial use, which includes the spa. The proposed building would be 11 stories or 108 feet tall. It would contain 72 required parking spaces on the second and third stories, 37 commercial parking spaces required for the spa pursuant to the BSA special permit and 35 residential spaces. This would allow us to lift the building's proposed 104 residential units above the above-grade subway tracks. Next slide, please. Pursuant to the C44L district regulations, the new ground floor portion of the building would set back five feet from the sidewalk and the residential portion of the building would set back 20 feet from the street line, which would place it 40 feet from the elevated train. Next slide, please. Our environmental assessment statement found no significant adverse impacts in any secret analysis category, including traffic and transportation, and an E designation will be placed on the site to require window attenuation that will create a comfortable interior noise level despite the train's presence. Next slide, please. And here you can see an illustrative rendering of the building. A C44L zoning district is appropriate here because it would encourage growth along a major neighborhood corridor and as well, that is well-served by public transit. The proposed C44L zoning district will offer a wider range of commercial uses than the existing C23 commercial overlay and would therefore enhance the diverse commercial character of McDonald Avenue. And now I'm going to pass to Ken Fisher to speak more to the neighborhood context.
Good morning, Vice Chair. Still morning. Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners. I'm going to, my name is Ken Fisher. I'm a member of Cozen O'Connor. I just want to talk briefly about the neighborhood and the philosophy behind the approach that the developer has taken. Over the last 10 years, Community Board 12 has added approximately 13,000 residents, but only 1,150 new units of of housing. So it's certainly no surprise that the Furman Center found in 2017, we go to the next slide, please, that this had one of the most severe overcrowding rates in the entire city. And the Community Board's statement of needs from 2019, the most recent that we could find, was was that there was a specific need to accommodate large families at an affordable rate. Now, in the case of this project, as Rachel mentioned, it's going to be 104 units. There will be no studios, no one bedrooms. As currently proposed, it will be entirely two bedrooms and three bedrooms. I should add that at the Community Board, there was some sentiment suggested for four-bedroom apartments. It's something that we're, we're, we're looking at. The apartments themselves, as currently designed, would be 25 to 30% larger than the minimum sizes required by HPD for permanently affordable housing. And we should also note that there has been no permanently affordable housing constructed at this AMI proposal, option two, since the city began tracking this data in 2014. We are proposing option two, which would allow an average AMI of 80%. We have not yet determined what the actual unit mix would be in terms of the affordable units and we have not yet set what the likely free market rents are going to, are going to be. But we think that this approach will create an opportunity to alleviate some of the pressure. It's certainly not going to be a solution to everything that that the neighborhood needs to to meet its, its growth. We go to the next slide, please. There are some buildings of comparable height in the, in the area, principally on the other side of McDonald Avenue. That's a function of how the special district works on the other side. But I think you saw from the aerial, there are many number of six-story buildings intermixed directly behind us. Next, please. I'm not sure. There we go. Nope, I think you went too far. I'm not sure why that slide isn't, isn't showing up, but let me just say, and we can, we'll send the corrected version in. But let me just say that in the last four years, there have been rezonings in this council district with similar heights at 1881 McDonald Avenue, which is a 95-foot approval, 5914 Bay Parkway, which is 115 feet, 1501 Sixtieth Street, which is 95 feet. And most recently, the commission approved 2080 McDonald Avenue, a few blocks down from us, is, and that's currently at the city council. Next slide, please. So we did get some pushback at the community board. And I think it, there's a couple of things that that I think are important. One was that that the unanimous vote at the community board itself did not reflect the robust discussion within the land use committee, which, which actually.
Your time is up, but you know, you'll likely have questions. So stay where you are. Are there questions from the commission? Commissioner Dweck, to be followed by Commissioner Osorio.
Ken, can you continue along the line about what what happened or transpired at the land use committee?
Sure. And thank you for the question, Commissioner. Let me just start at the, at the end and work backwards, which was the vote was 17 votes to deny, nine votes against the resolution to deny. And there were six abstentions, which I think you know, under the charter count, there's no vote. So effectively, it was a 17 to 15 vote. There were some people who were concerned about development at all, perfectly understandable. There were others that were concerned about the degree of it and suggestions from several community board members that perhaps an adjustment in the program would alleviate their concerns. In response to that, we came back with a revised proposal, basically to take two floors off, we would lose about 20 units, increase the amount of parking, which was something that a number of members talked about and potentially include some four-bedroom apartments. Unfortunately, the community board declined to let us make a presentation of that at the full board meeting. They declined to have a second land use committee meeting. And so we were not able to formally put this in front of them and the vote that they took was based on our original proposal. We're in conversations with the council member. He wants to see how the process plays out. We recently reserved, received the Borough President's recommendation. I think that the council member will make some suggestions to us about the program as we get closer to the council review. So that's the, that's the context. On the one hand, this is a community board that says they had needed desperate need of housing. On the other hand, there was some suggestion that perhaps this was not the solution that they were looking for.
Thank you. I think the major concern was probably the height. And just to chime in, I do believe that some four-bedroom units might be appropriate in this area. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I think that that was, it was really clear. And and I, and I appreciate the response to Commissioner Dweck's question. It was, it was important to understand your response to the questions, concerns that have been raised. Building on that, I was wondering if you can explain or testify regarding your position on the request from the Borough President to retain a nonprofit administering agent for the Affordable Housing Lottery? That's the first question. And to highlight the second question, another request or recommendation from the Borough President regarding the sustainability measures. I mean, the renders that were shared with us do begin to highlight what your intention is in that regard. But I was wondering if you can be more specific and and help us understand what that entails.
So first of all, with respect to engaging a not-for-profit for the rent-up administration of the, the income restricted units, the answer to that is, of course, yes. We haven't made a final decision as to who that will be because we want to get a little bit closer to the building being completed. But, you know, on, on my shortlist, at least to recommend to the developer is the Housing Partnership. This is a very diverse area. We want an organization that isn't identified necessarily as being with one part of the community or or another. As far as the sustainability measures are concerned, and I also want to include in this the sidewalk treatments, the bio swells. That's something that the developer will, will be talking with his team about. And obviously, we'll have to work out those details as part of the builder's pavement plan. But in terms of the rooftop, it's the intention that the rooftop will be a combination of green space and and also solar. The technologies in those areas both are changing very quickly. So we haven't made a final selection of equipment, but it's a firm commitment by the developer that there will be sustainability measures occupying the, the roof.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Other questions for the team? I don't believe I see any. So we can go to our public speakers now. And we will follow our usual procedure of five speakers in opposition to be followed by five speakers in support and we'll go back and forth until the speaker list is exhausted. So the list of speakers that I have is Levi Sokaya Iskowitz was the first speaker.
Yeah, we have, yes.
To be followed by Jacob Landau. Well, let's have Ms. Iskowitz proceed and we'll have the other speakers come after.
Yes, hi. Good morning. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. This is Father Iskowitz. I live in the neighborhood of Borough Park. The housing here is dismal, to say the least. I work very nearby on Forest Avenue, right on Donald. And as a single mother of four children, I just think that this development with the housing that it would afford us would be tremendous. Thank you very much.
Okay. So these are speakers in favor of of the project at this point, Ryan? Just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like we have speakers in favor signed up.
Okay, Jacob Landau. I think you're muted, Mr. Landau.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Just wanted to say that I live in this neighborhood. I live a block away. And as Ken Fisher mentioned before, the, the explosion of our growth in this neighborhood and the housing provided is tremendous, doesn't, doesn't fit. It's 1,100 houses built for almost 13,000 families, which we grew over here. I think it's very, very important that this thing should be really developed and it should be approved. Now, I also think that it's, it's, it's great that this is a developer that could really deliver on their promises. As you could see, that they started with one part of the building, which is the spa. I think it's a state of the art and it's beautiful. So I think they are a developer, which is something we should trust in our neighborhood and they should be allowed to have as big and as huge as possible. I think it's only going to enhance the beauty of our neighborhood and looking forward that whatever they need, it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Landau? Thank you. Mayor Deutsch? Mayor Deutsch?
Hi, good morning.
Proceed, sir.
Hi, I just wanted to say one, one small thing, that I live like three blocks away, and I am very much in support of this project. We need more housing, and we need bigger housing. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Deutsch? Thank you. Moshe Herskowitz? Herskowitz? Moshe Herskowitz?
Mr. Herskowitz is in the Zoom. Let's see if we can get him to speak.
There, there he is. I see him.
Yeah, Mr. Herskowitz, we don't seem to be able to hear you.
It looks like it, there may have been a connection error.
Sure. Do we want to try and get him back in, Tom?
Yeah, I think if he just reconnects, it should take care of itself.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to move to-
Yeah, let's call the next one. We'll work. Oh, he's connecting his audio. Hold on just a second. It's giving us the thing. We'll get, we'll get the next speaker teed up, so that we're not losing any time. Mr. Herskowitz. Okay, we'll try again with him. Let's call the next speaker, and we'll-
Okay, Ephraim Weber? Ephraim Weber? Is he in the queue?
He is joining.
Yes, you can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity. As a neighbor, we need more housing. That's all I can say. We really need more housing. We have large families, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any questions for Mr. Weber? I don't believe so. Thank you, sir. Is Mr. Herskowitz?
Looks like he's still having some, some audio issues. We're going to give him a call and see.
Okay. We'll then move to Isaac Schwartz. Isaac Schwartz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to say I live in this neighborhood too, and it's a very crowded neighborhood. And we are a growing community. And the more housing, the better will be for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Malki Zelikovitz? Malki Zelikovitz?
We are promoting now.
Yeah, okay.
Malki Zelikovitz?
Yeah, we're getting, getting that person in the room there.
He's here, but he may not actually be at his computer at the moment.
Okay.
Oh, he just, he's here.
Please proceed. Time is of the essence.
Malki Zelikovitz, you should be able to unmute your microphone, turn on the camera.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to also say, as living in the neighborhood, that I think it sounds like a great plan, and would love to see more housing. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. I see Joseph Rubenfeld. I think you're muted, sir.
You're muted, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, hi. My name is, my name is Joseph Rubenfeld. I live in the neighborhood, a couple of streets away. And my dream is to be able to have my children eventually living, you know, within close proximity. So, this is undeniably a crucial need. I'm very excited, hopefully, to have this project come as soon as possible. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Questions? I don't believe so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Herskowitz, we have him on the line.
Okay, Mr. Herskowitz.
Star six, Mr. Herskowitz on your phone to unmute.
Mr. Herskowitz? Any signs of-
If you, Mr. Herskowitz, if you press star six on your telephone, you, you are also in, on, on audio on the phone, so. Yep, he may not be able to hear us. I'm sure, quite sure what's going on.
All right, let's, let's move to Manashi Schwartz, and maybe-
Sure, we'll, we'll keep, keep going.
Manashi Schwartz?
There we go. Should be able to unmute and turn on your camera. Isaac Schwartz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, as everybody was saying, I also live in the community. And I'm a little bit more aware of the need of housing, because I'm involved with the community. I know that we have a lot of people that are looking for larger housing. They live in one or two-bedroom apartments in the neighborhood, and the family has grown. And they don't have where to relocate, because there is no housing. And I wouldn't understand why somebody would not have a positive attitude towards this project, where it's only going to increase the quality of life. And besides, the neighborhood that is being built in is a neighborhood that can use some reviving. It's McDonald Avenue, and it's, what they put up here with the World Spa makes the neighborhood look beautiful. And I saw before, they put up the slide of the rendering of the house that's going to be built, of the building that's going to be going up. It looks amazing. It looks great. So I think it's only going to improve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yakov Rosenfeld? Yakov Rosenfeld? Yakov Rosenfeld?
We have Mr. Rosenfeld in the room, guys?
It does not appear that we have Mr. Rosenfeld.
Okay.
Is Mr. Herskowitz still?
We can give him another try. Mr. Herskowitz, if you press star six, you will unmute your phone. We'll, yeah, we're not having much luck with that.
Okay, Fruma Klein? Fruma Klein? Fruma Klein?
We have Fruma Klein. Fruma, please press star six to unmute. Fruma, you're unmuted. You may begin.
Hi, I felt that I live within the community, and I think it's a beautiful thing to create more housing and for people to live more comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you. Shruli Walner? Shruli Walner?
There in the room? There we go.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me on. As you probably guessed, I also live in the community. And it's no secret that every community, not only ours, needs more housing, and it's a problem all, all over the place. But in this situation, most of the housing being built in generally all over the place is studios and two-bedrooms and smaller stuff over here. This is really going to help us if they're going to do bigger housing. Three- and four-bedroom apartments is going to help us a lot tremendously. So that's going to be very positive. And additionally, I work as a local real estate broker in the Bar Park, Midwood, Flatbush areas. I do mainly commercial stuff, but I can tell you that much. Every time that I put up my sign or anything by a, should it be a storefront or medical space or whatever it is, I get, for every one call that, that's interested in the space, I get 20 people asking me if there's apartments for rent, specifically in that area. So, we desperately need it, and known as the developers are the top developers, they'll for sure deliver something beautiful, and something that the community will only benefit from. So, I wish and hope that you give them the go-ahead for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, I don't see any additional speakers. Do you want to check with Mr. Herskowitz one last time?
Yeah, it seems like Mr. Herskowitz is, is up the Zoom. We'll, we'll ask him to follow up with something in writing. But you do have a question from a commissioner, I believe.
Alrighty, let me-
Mr. Dweck.
Commissioner Dweck?
Is the last speaker still on?
Yes.
Just wondering, as Shruli, you said you live in the community. What proximity to the building do you propose? Do you, do you live, how far do you live from there?
So, I live four blocks up. And my entire extended family that's around, 15 relatives live in the same area over there. So as far as using the train or anything, we're right there, and that's our community. That's our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Walner? I don't see any. Are there any further speakers on this item, Ryan?
I see no further speakers, and we'll, we'll reach out to Mr. Herskowitz about possible written testimony.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers on the item, the hearing is closed.
Okay. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 23 through 26, Innovative Urban Village. CD5, calendar number 23, C220312ZMK. Calendar number 24, N220313ZR. Calendar number 25, C220314ZSK. Calendar number 26, C220311ZSK. Public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments and special permit concerning Innovative Urban Village notice. A public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above ULR hearings to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
Okay, this is a 10-minute team presentation. The team consists of Melanie Myers, Reverend A.R. Bernard, David Velez, Kurt Goodrich, Brian Kelly, Simeon Malay, and Vishan Chakrabarti, among others. Are we ready to proceed?
I believe we're ready to proceed.
Okay, please do.
Thank you for having us. My, my name is Melanie Myers, land use partner at Fried Frank, representing the applicant for a series of land use actions to facilitate the creation of an approximately 2,000-unit of portable mixed-use development in East New York. As you know, it is a project that has received the support of the local community board and the Brooklyn Borough President. And when complete, will provide an affordable, inviting anchor to the neighborhood to complement the existing Christian Cultural Center. We thank the commissioners for their thoughtful questions at the time of certification and at review session, and we'd like to spend our time addressing a few of them. To do so, Reverend A.R. Bernard will first speak to the broad goals of the project. Then Vishan Chakrabarti of Pow Architects will speak to the design intent for the project, including its public spaces and the relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. And finally, Kurt Goodrich of Menadnac Development will discuss the affordable program and vision for the project. We also have a number of team members available to respond to any questions following the presentation. So I thank you for your time. Next slide, please, and I will turn it over to Reverend Bernard.
Good morning, everyone, and, and thank you for the opportunity to present the Urban Village Development Project. The vision of the Urban Village is an affordable, quality urban living experience with approximately 2,000 mixed-income residences, retail, commercial, educational, recreational, and community service spaces. And it includes both rental and home ownership, allowing for upward mobility within the same community. It has been a six-year journey for Christian Cultural Center to find the right partners, which we have in Gotham, Pow Architects, and Menadnac, and to hear from community stakeholders and find the right balance between affordability and feasibility. Our project is based upon four pillars: environment, people, programs, and sustainability. The first slide, we just want to present that, you know, it's an income-based, intergenerational, affordable housing. There's going to be neighborhood-focused retail, community facilities and amenities, education and jobs, green living spaces, and a cultural arts and performing arts center, as well as open spaces. Next slide, please. So, the master plan community is on our 10-and-a-half-acre East New York campus, which will consist of 10 new buildings, open space, and, and street network to be constructed in phases over approximately 10-year period. Creation of approximately 1,975 units of 100% rent-stabilized, intergenerational, and income-based workforce housing. The residential plan affords the plan a mix of new community facilities, neighborhood commercial, and recreational uses to create a, what we call a 21st-century urban community, walkable, livable space that can be enjoyed by the community and become a destination for those outside of the community. Next slide, please. Again, just a development overview. We're talking about convenience neighborhood, retail, including fresh food grocery, cultural resources, including a performing arts center, focus on green living, and, and increase in publicly accessible open space, including children's playground, active rooftop recreation space, and central quad. And something special to me are the following three items: a workforce training center that will train in HVAC, carpentry, electrical, and plumbing, as well as a cyber cafe to bridge the digital gap and create spaces for learning and homework, et cetera, for the community, and a 24/7 daycare and adjacent children's playground. We're looking at a shuttle service to be near, to nearby subway stations to access public transportation. As you know, our community has always been a two-fair zone since the building of Sarat City and, and the Towers. Next slide, please. And here, our architect, Vishan, will take over and share with you the site.
Hello, Vice Chair. Commissioner, it's always a pleasure to see you. It's a thrill to work on this project. I think you probably all know the development site, it is in East New York. It is on flatlands between Pennsylvania and Louisiana with a number of different contexts around it, from the high Sarat City buildings to NITIA projects, as well as lower buildings to the west. Next, please. The magnet here is Reverend A.R. Bernard's congregation. It's a very active site. It's about a 10-and-a-half-acre site. You see Sarat City in the background. Next, please. And the original concept for this site was always to create a destination to integrate the street grid around it, to make sure that all of the existing streets plugged into this new project, and that we would create at the heart of this project something that would have not just public space, but also the various social infrastructure pieces that the reverend mentioned. Next, please. We've worked very hard to create an active ground floor plane that adds to a sense of security and a sense of community, using a lot of Jane Jacobs' basic tenants such as mixed-use, small blocks, mixing existing and new structures, and activating streetscapes. Next, please. And in response to community concerns, we've actually lowered the heights quite a bit from our original proposal. And if you go to the next slide, you'll- And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we are currently at uh the tallest building at about fourteen stories. And you see to the south the Starrett City buildings, which are upwards of twenty stories. We've also created a variety of different building heights, a two-story performing arts center in the center uh at the quad, as well as those smaller buildings which are maisonettes that you can see, and a and a uh public space at the corner of Louisiana and Flatlands, as well as in the heart of the site. Next, please. Uh, just in terms of the site plan, we wanted to make sure that there were two major open spaces, one on the corner of Flatlands in Louisiana, the second at the heart of the site that was protected from these very large streets around it, but was still inviting to the public by opening up to the street grid and to stare at city. Um, to answer some of Commissioner Osario's questions from the Osario's questions from the review session, we've incorporated a number of resiliency measures, such as that open space at Flatlands in Louisiana, which was one of the low points of the site. Um, we've uh uh planned to put many of the building mechanicals uh in an elevated location off the ground floor, potentially on the roof. Um, and we are looking at making sure that on the perimeter of the site, that there are no residential units on the ground floor. Also, in terms of trees, we are increasing the number of trees um from uh one-twenty-five to about a hundred and fifty and changing the uh amount of planted area on the site from about twenty-eight thousand nine hundred square feet to forty-six thousand square feet of porous area. Um, and so we're very excited about this site plan. Next, please. One of the things that the site plan promises is, again, this extension of the street grid into the site and a great porosity to the public. Uh, we really want this to be a destination that stays active. Uh, and you can see that there are nearly three acres that are open uh to the sky uh and uh six acres if you include the streets and sidewalks. Uh, next, please. I think now I'm going to turn it over. Uh-oh, I'm just going to walk you through the renderings. This is just a view of that public quad with the performing arts center. Next. Uh, the corner of Pennsylvania and Flatlands. Next. Uh, the internal street we're creating, these are going to feel very much like public streets. Uh, you'll notice this is the two-story maisonette character. We've been working with city planning staff, as well as the local community. Uh, and we want to make sure that we created a breakdown of scale, as well as the potential for homeownership units. Uh, next, please. And a view down Georgia. So from Pennsylvania, this very porous opening is arcade that opens to the uh performing arts center and the public space beyond to make sure this feels public. Next, please. Now I'm going to turn it over to Kirk, who's going to talk about affordability. Thank you.
I know time is short. Greetings, uh, Vice Chair Knuckles, uh, Planet Commission members. So on affordability, we tried to strike a balance between creating affordability for people in CB five and upward mobility. And we think we've done that with this proposal. All the rental units are below eighty percent AMI. And the proposed affordable homeownership are between eighty and a hundred percent. Next slide. Uh, you know, the the uh certification AMIs, um, we had fifty percent of the units below sixty, twenty-five to sixty to eighty, and then twenty-five at eighty to a hundred. After feedback, um, prior to U L R um certification, we had eliminated the hundred to uh a hundred twenty percent AMI bracket. Um, and at certification, as I said before, we're at fifty percent thirty to sixty. Post-certification, we got the feedback that we wanted more units at less than sixty. Uh, and we heard that even the hundred percent AMI brands were too uh were too high. Next slide. So where we ended up, um, we ended up at sixty percent uh of the units below fifty percent AMI, fifteen percent at fifty to sixty, and twenty-five percent at sixty to eighty with no rental units above eighty percent. And we ended up um with a hundred percent of the homeownership between eighty and a hundred percent AMI. And um and in addition to that, you know, two hundred units will be senior and a hundred homeownership.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I'm sure there'll be questions from the commission. Let me just see. Uh, Commissioner Goodrich to be followed by Commissioner Osorio. Commissioner Goodrich. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Um, my audio is a little bit wacky. I'm actually doing it from my phone, so I'm not sure if you can hear me uh well, but my question um is if there's, this all looks great. Uh, and my question is if there's any, if there was any consideration for making the AMI lower beyond the thirty percent because of the area. It's um, it's a very low-income area. And so obviously, one of the feedbacks and, you know, criticisms would be that even the thirty percent AMI um might be too much for the the actual income of that particular neighborhood. But overall, I love the project. Um, I'm very familiar with the area. But that's my one question, which I also think that people may have the same question as well. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to answer.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Goodrich. That's an excellent point. It's a point that was made repeatedly by the council member and community board. And part of the reason uh that we we've been far more aggressive here on affordability than um is typically the case in under this particular HPD program. So under the typical HPD program, fifty percent of the units are targeted um to households at fifty percent AMI or lower. We're at sixty percent there. And even beyond that, we have twenty percent of the units at thirty, twenty at forty, and uh uh twenty at fifty. So um the the biggest challenge we have with going under thirty percent is that once you go below forty percent, the units no longer pay even the operating expenses. And so the further down you go in terms of affordability, you have to balance that with units at a higher level. So what we tried to do here was really go as larger tranche units at lower AMIs. But the truth of the matter is that you end up serving a a lot more people than you think at under thirty percent because people are coming off the street with rental subsidy and through um and separately uh through the homeless system. There'll be about fifteen percent of these units will be homeless on average. So the bottom line is, we are actually serving people below thirty in a significant way. Um, but they are coming in with rental subsidy. And that's typical for affordable housing projects, but will be especially true here, given the degree of affordability we have um prescribed.
Thank you. That was uh very helpful. Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner Goodrich?
Uh, no, thank you.
Alrighty.
Great.
Alrighty, uh, Commissioner Osorio be followed by Commissioner Bernie, to be followed by Commissioner Kiermany.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, and I and and thanks so much for highlighting some of the questions that came up as part of the presentation. I thought that that was very useful. Um, would would trigger some of those questions um has to do with, oh, and before I start, I also wanted to commend you for the quality of the D I S. I I found it really, really useful and really clear. Uh, but what triggered some of those questions have to do with, obviously, you're in the coastal zone, you you completed W R P, um, and you acknowledge that you're in a special natural waterfront area. And so even though I I I um eh now understand some of the rationale in the site plan for the treatment that you've given to Flatlands and Louisiana, um, I, the corner of of the layout, which, you know, i- in terms of the permeability makes a lot of sense. Uh, but in terms of the building layout, kind of opens some of that potential five-hundred-year flooding to come in. Um, I I think that the the, I do want to um recognize sort of the importance of the landscape design that you've created in that area, as well as the creation of the quad, which internally ma- makes a lot of sense. The the question that I have really is on the treatment that you've given to Flatlands, which is where the five-hundred-year floodplain is mostly going to affect, I mean, the corner, but also Flatlands itself. Um, and 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 specifically, given the 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 location in a special natural waterfront area, um, I'm I'm concerned with the amount of trees that you're relocating from that sidewalk, which in the picture that you show, a corner, Flatlands, Louisiana, shows a double line of trees on both sides of the sidewalk where where we need them the most. And so even though you're increasing the number of trees, as you've eh expressed here, I want to understand why are we moving trees away from the area that is going to be potentially flooded uh inwards, where where we need that the most, not to mention the fact that there's also potential storm flooding coming from Pennsylvania, according to the city maps, and also vulnerability to heat in this part of the city.
Uh, Commissioner Osorio, we really um, we really appreciate uh your detailed look at all of this. And we care about many of the very same issues that you do. And there's a lot of competing issues here. There is a massive water main that sits right under Flatlands, and that is part of the issue. But I I think we should stress that we are dramatically increasing the amount of porous area across the site, both in terms of the corner of Flatlands in Louisiana, which is the low point of the site. And so we actually we we want to take, when when there's a flood condition, we want to make sure that that acts like a sponge right at that low point. And then, of course, then in the center of the site, there is this new open space that we think will help a great deal, as well as green roofs and other things that we are planning across the site uh for that five-hundred-year flood condition. We are increasing the number of trees, as you mentioned. Uh, but we also have to work with the building conditions. Flatlands, um, you know, the Flatlands today, eh, we really felt from the beginning, and even that little hand sketch showed that the Flatlands deserves a significant street wall. And so without that street wall presence was very important. We are expanding the sidewalk there as well. So there's a lot of different things going on. We are going to have street trees on Flatlands. Um, and we are increasing the overall number of uh trees, but you know, it's just balancing all of these different factors.
I think I appreciate the response and 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 I really encourage you to think about how can you maintain the environmental quality of that sidewalk as a public space? I mean, you're creating a series of internal spaces that will be open to the public inside, but that sidewalk is critical. Not only it's 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 critical to maintain sort of like the the permeability of Flatlands and and not, you know, reduce it. Uh, but also think about the importance of those trees, which I don't think that we should be relocating from that side in terms of the proximity of these additional residential units that are going to be built across the street from an industrial area. So this is an important, a natural barrier that I think that you should enhance, not reduce.
Uh, we'll absolutely take a further look at this, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Osorio. Uh, Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I want to say I appreciate the provision of the Performing Arts Center and the Quad, I think two very welcome public amenities. I'm a little bit concerned that they're sort of buried inside um the development and not really visible from the street. And I'm wondering whether they wouldn't be better placed on um on Louisiana or Flatlands. And and Vishan, I'm I'm sure you've given consideration to this. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on that.
Commissioner Bernie, thank you. And we have heard this concern. Uh, and uh, you know, eh eh th- there are a couple of different things going on. In terms of the major quad in the public space, we are giving that public space on Flatlands in Louisiana. We felt that we wanted a a not a more privatized, but more protected public space because the issue here is that Flatlands, Louisiana, and Pennsylvania are heavily trafficked streets. And to have an open space that's just really hanging out there, we don't think that open space would ever feel like that great outdoor room that would feel uh protected from the noise and the traffic. Uh, we are about a less than a mile from the Belt Parkway. So there's a lot of co- uh commuter traffic that moves through this area. So we want to protect that open space. We then wanted to associate, as is the tradition in many cultures, the great cultural building, as well as the spiritual center with that open space, uh, which led it to be in the center of the site. Um, the other thing I would just say, uh, two things on this. Um, if we flipped it, if we, for instance, had the Performing Arts Center on Flatlands and had the residential building that's sitting there on the open space, then the open space would be hit with the shadow of that residential building all day long, as opposed to having the benefit of that relatively low performing arts center uh sitting there. The last thing I just want to say about this is, we've designed the site, and it was actually very much uh in working with the staff at D C P to make sure that it was porous to stare at city as well. So that that southern boundary of the site, we don't consider a wall. We consider it uh a gateway to our neighbors to the south. And so uh, you know, it's also very important that those amenities are accessible from the southern end, where there are many residents who would want to take advantage of those uh amenities.
Okay, so so i- if the Performing Arts Center and the Quad remain on the interior of the site, are the ways in which you can ensure that they appear to be publicly accessible, that they don't appear to be private? Because I think that's the danger, that they will be somewhat hidden from the street. People won't feel comfortable going into them, feeling that they're entering a private domain. And I think that's a, that's my concern.
Sure. And I I I appreciate, I mean, I tried to show that view on, so Georgia, which is an existing street to the south of Flatlands, we've extended Georgia uh and extended as many of the existing streets as possible in order to address this very issue. And also on Georgia, again, working with city planning staff, we've opened up an arcade so that we've really opened the aperture up from Flatlands into the public space so that there's a very clear and open view corridor. The buildings are also set back from that view corridor, so light and air come into that view corridor. Um, and uh, so, you know, uh, we absolutely hear the concern that eh the Reverend from the outset has talked about the desire for this not just to be a spiritual destination, but to be an everyday urban destination that becomes a kind of third place as, you know, in addition to work at home. And so it's our every desire in terms of the design of the ground floor of the buildings, uh, the streetscape, that we make this as public and as inviting as possible. And that includes designing the streets to D O T standards. So even though they are not technically public streets, they feel very much like New York City public streets. So that there's no threshold condition as you move from uh the surrounding neighborhood into the site.
Right. And and lastly, uh, in terms of the uh programming and the maintenance and control of the quad, is that going to be closed at night? Or how will it, how will that arrange? How will that be organized?
Uh, someone else should answer that question.
There will be a restrictive uh restrictive declaration on the site, and it will include provisions regarding the open space. Um, so the hours that we've been talking to city planning are extensive. They're from six in the morning until one A M at night. Um, will be in, you know, and so the idea is that the streets themselves and the private street network would be open twenty-four hours a day. And the with the uh open spaces, the central quad and the entry area at the corner of Flatlands and Louisiana, open between six A M and one A M. So it will be available for many activities, many hours of the day.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kiermany.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you to the whole team for your presentation and for your thoughtfulness and in the in your responses. Um, I just want to lift up, and this is related to Commissioner Goodrich's question, but on the homeownership side, and lift up something that the community board mentioned in terms of kind of workshops on homeownership. And we know that the down down payments can be such a barrier. Um, and if that has been considered or thought about in your planning and talking with the community and just your thoughts on that.
So, um, thank you for the question, Commissioner. And homeownership happens to be an area that uh affordable homeownership has, happens to be an area which we've done a tremendous amount of in East New York. Uh, so we've done our company, Manad Nak, we've done one thousand one hundred fifty-one homes, uh, all affordable between Spring Creek and um and West of Pennsylvania Avenue. And and we're really sensitive to this issue. Um, I think the biggest thing I would say is uh, it's really a couple of things. One, the 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 down payment assistance program through HPD hovered at like thirty thousand or so for many years, and is now over a hundred thousand, which is critical. Um, and I think that's that that's a really important piece to this, when you're talking about uh people just trying to make ends meet and um and working-class folks. The second thing is we we spent a tremendous amount of time um um really focusing on affordability and the conversations about AMI levels here. And the thing that's uh really clear to us is concentrating affordability only at the eighty percent level creates a situation where inevitably you end up um leaving people out who are a few dollars over. And so the ability to have a a few AMI levels on the homeownership side is really critical, we found, over the last twenty-five years in the neighborhood, to be able to um to get people in at a range of incomes. And fundamentally, it's very hard to, on new construction, homeownership, to deliver homeownership to people at the sixty percent AMI or below. I think the better alternatives for people, the the better alternatives for people I think the better alternatives for people, the, the better alternatives for people at those AMI levels and lower to, to have a stake uh and a stepping stone is concepts like limited, limited equity co-ops, community land trust. So in my mind, as I think a continuum of control and affordability um from rent stabilized housing, which is what we're doing um with all the rental housing. Um incrementally, when you look at people who are a low income, having a community land trust works for them. And then the next step up from that is what we're doing on the homeownership side here. And so from my perspective, I see a continuum and, you know, have been involved in sort of all steps here. And so I think the combination of the enhanced down payment assistance and the, the sort of palette of affordability on homeownership really conforms to what we've seen work well in this particular neighborhood.
Okay, uh, other questions for, for the team? From the commission? Uh, I don't see any. So I think we move to uh public speakers, Ryan?
Uh, yes, you can move to speakers.
Uh, first speaker I see is Bill Wilkins. Be followed by Angela White and then Sharon Hanks. Is that consistent with us?
Uh, no, I have um, uh Randy Piers.
Okay, I, I don't think I'm seeing all the speakers.
Okay, uh, yeah, Mr. Wilkins is, is further down on the list, but you have the, that we have Randy Piers, followed by John Tritt.
Okay, Mr. Pierce.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Randy Piers, President and CEO of Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are the largest business association in New York State. Uh, we're an economic development oriented chamber. We also have a CDFI. We do micro lending, uh particularly with uh BIPOC communities and businesses throughout the borough. Um, we are in favor, wholeheartedly with this proposal. Um, I will say that we have um a lot of business recovery staff that have been doing work throughout the borough uh on the ground. We see things from a sort of global perspective. This is probably one of the best examples of a comprehensive community economic, community and economic development uh planning project that we've ever seen. And um my full testimony will be submitted in writing, so I'm going to try and say some things that aren't in that testimony. Uh, I am not disconnected from the community. Um, I grew up in Canarsie. I worked in Starrett City growing up. I remember when CCC uh moved from uh Linden Boulevard, former supermarket site uh to where they are now. Uh, this is a wonderful evolution of an empowerment model. Uh, I want to also point out that it includes opportunities for entrepreneurship, uh for additional retail, and it includes a workforce training center. And why that's important, I remember when we worked on the Gateway Project together, uh, one of the challenges was local hiring. Uh, and this seeks to also address a long-term challenge uh for job training in that particular community. Um, you know, it has a lot uh to appreciate in this particular proposal. It has a good community partner that's been trusted uh for many decades in that community. Um, and like I said, there's a lot happening throughout the borough of Brooklyn, but this is probably the best example of sort of live, work, play, uh and engage uh in community building that we've seen uh anywhere uh in terms of the projects that we sort of work on uh and that way we weigh in on. Uh, we are happy to partner with CCC and the developers in any way that we need, uh that we can, could help and support this particular project. Uh, and once again, we enthusiastically endorse this project, not just for the affordable housing, which we all know is needed, but for the comprehensive nature of this particular proposal and what it's going to mean for that particular community uh and, and its approach to empowerment in general. So thank you very much. Uh, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Uh, questions for Mr. Pierce? Commissioner Osorio?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Pierce, for your testimony. Um, I, I think that your, your perspective on, on uh the project is really important. You know, one of the observations that I've made um as I've been reviewing the documents has to do, you know, the extent to which the project is contributing to or is, or its connection, its response to uh the needs of the businesses uh on, in the IBC, uh the adjacent to the project site. And so, and, and so I, I'm pleased to hear you talk about workforce development. I'm wondering if, if you can expand a little bit in terms of, you know, where do you see the contribution of the project? What sectors, to what extent is this really serving the industrial businesses uh that are in the IBC? And, and specifically, you know, given the, the, the location and the characteristics of this community, I was wondering if you can also talk a little bit about to what extent this is actually responding to by the needs of BIPOC communities in this area of Brooklyn?
So I, I think it's a great, it's a great, great observation. And the one thing we didn't talk about is procurement opportunities, right? This is a very large project. Uh, there's going to be many opportunities for procurement, you know, whether it's on the construction side, whether it's at the end user side in terms of some of the retail. Uh, so I think there's multiple opportunities to engage the local IBC businesses. Uh, I think there needs to be a dedicated effort to outreach to those businesses and to take a census of what is available and how that fits into the overall development project. Uh, we would be happy to work on something like that. Um, in addition, uh like I mentioned, I think the best example of the workforce, the need for the workforce center and how that responds to local residents is when we opened up, um, you know, Gateway. Um, the Gateway Center was really a game changer for that particular community. It added significant retail, significant job opportunities. We had some transportation challenges. How do we get the buses to go out there? Uh, but you know, CCC at the time actually did help to play a local organizing role uh in terms of uh trying to source for job seekers from that particular community. This is kind of the next evolution, right? It's about being very deliberate in terms of the job training opportunities that are going to be needed. Uh, by the way, whether it's construction, whether it's end user retail, whether it's in some of the cultural amenities that are ultimately going to come online. Um, but you know, this is an opportunity for the community to have a say in what does that workforce planning and workforce development planning look like uh and how that can help shape the future.
Uh, thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I mean, it's, I appreciate the response and I, and I know that, and you've mentioned construction, you've mentioned retail, you've mentioned the cultural initiatives. But I'm wondering if, if there's anything else that you can say specifically about industrial jobs in the IBC? Like, for example, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to hear the, the, the applicant talk about sort of these um in, in investments in, in improving the environmental quality of the site. But I don't see sort of like workforce development connected to it. It's also exciting to hear, you know, the applicant talk about community land trusts. But I, I, I don't see sort of like how, how could we engage with the industrial or support the industrial uh jobs, as you said, so that people who work there can live there?
So I, I think Bill Wilkins might be the better person to answer that, given the fact that he manages the IBC. But that being said, I do think on the procurement side, there's a great opportunity to ensure that we're sourcing locally, all right? I mean, if you've got metal fabricators, for example, if you've got uh, you know, lumberyards, if you've got the businesses that are already there that can, that can provide uh the necessary goods and services uh to this particular project, then we should make every effort to reach out to them so that ultimately uh they're more successful overall.
Thanks. I, I really appreciate your perspective on this.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Pierce from the commission? Uh, don't see any. Our next speaker is John Tritt. John Tritt, who will be followed by Kate Cunningham.
Uh, hello. Good afternoon. My name is John Tritt. I'm the Deputy Political Director for SEIU 32BJ. And I want to thank, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles and members of the Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak here today uh on behalf of the 85,000 members of SEIU 32BJ in New York. Um, here today to speak in strong support of the Innovation Urban Village Project. Uh, 32BJ is happy to show support for developers who invest in the communities where they build. And our union supports development that will uphold the standard, the industry standard, and provides opportunities that will give working families an opportunity not to just to survive, but thrive. And that's, that's why I'm here in support today. Uh, the developers of the project um uh reached out early to our union in the planning stages and made a commitment to create prevailing wage jobs for the future building service workers uh who will be employed in the development. And it's our estimate that over 30 such jobs will be created. And we are especially encouraged because these jobs are typically filled by local community members and will pay families sustaining wages, which are crucial to families moving into the middle class. Uh, we are also happy to express uh our support for the badly needed affordable housing that this project will create. We all know that affordable housing is needed in every corner of New York City, especially in central Brooklyn. So in short, this project will create good jobs, badly needed affordable housing, and numerous other community benefits. So 32BJ is in strong support. I thank you. I hope everyone has a good rest of their day.
Thank you, Mr. Tritt. Questions for Mr. Tritt? Don't see any. Kate Cunningham?
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Cunningham. I'm the Director of Government and External Relations at the New York Building Congress. And I'll be testifying today on behalf of our President and CEO, Carlo Asasura. On behalf of more than 550 constituent organizations and 250,000 skilled tradespeople, including architects, engineers, contractors, and labor, we testify today in support of the Innovative Urban Village Project as we firmly believe the plan will be extremely beneficial for East New York and its residents. As all of you know, New York City is currently facing the dire realities of a housing crisis. More housing development is needed now more than ever, and the Christian Cultural Center is the perfect candidate to lead that charge. The Christian Cultural Center, under the dedicated and magnificent leadership of the Reverend Bernard, with whom Carlo had the dedicate, had the pleasure of working closely with in the past, is a reputable longstanding community member that has the best interest of the community at heart. Throughout their partnership with Gotham Organization and Manonak Development, and over the course of their engagement with the community, the center has incorporated community feedback, including reducing the heights of some buildings and eliminating higher income tiers above 80% AMI for rental housing, as you've heard before. The Innovative Urban Villages Plan will create housing opportunities for families of various sizes and incomes, including plans for over 1,850 units of income restricted rental housing, of which 200 will be set aside for seniors, one of our most vulnerable populations. The plan also includes 100 affordable house, homeownership units, which will allow residents to gain financial security and build equity, equity for the next generation. The project will also include many benefits that will be available to the public, such as the Performing Arts Center, a school, public playground, 24/7 childcare, green space, um, and other community facility services, which is a win for the direct community and New York City as a whole. Additionally, the residents of the Linden Boulevard, Pink and Wortman Houses, all within the vicinity of the project, will benefit from the GED programs, childcare services, career counseling, and vocational training services that are included in the plan. The project has the potential to create real economic opportunity for members of our community by creating new locations for local businesses, community amenities, and will bring both local retail and jobs to East New York. The New York Building Congress is proud to support the Innovative Urban Village Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Cunningham? I don't believe I see any. Thank you. Aaron Sanders? Aaron Sanders?
Good morning, Vice Chair Knuckles and members of the City Planning Commission. My name is Aaron Sanders and I am the Public Policy Director at the Association for a Better New York. Thank you for the opportunity to deliver testimony on behalf of ADNY and support their Innovative Urban Village Project. ADNY is a nonprofit organization representing community stakeholders, including corporations, nonprofits, unions, government authorities, and educational, cultural, and health institutions dedicated to the advancement and support of New York City's people, community, and businesses. Our mission is to promote connection between public and private sectors to make New York City a better place to live, work, and visit for all. I want to begin my testimony today by discussing why this project is vital to the community of East New York, Brooklyn. Housing insecurity and affordability are problems that persist in New York City aggregately. However, neighborhoods like East New York are facing the brunt of this crisis. According to a May 2022 report from the Association for a Neighborhood and Housing Development, the rate of evictions for every 1,000 filing, filings was 25.2%. Community Board Five in Brooklyn ranks in the top 20 in evictions. Additional data suggests that only 9% of affordable housing stock was available to residents who live in East New York. In other words, there's a scarcity of housing for those who need it most. I would also like to highlight that in the same year, 33% of households were categorized as severely rent burdened and 20%, 29% of all households surveyed was analyzed to be rent burdened. This data suggests that a housing crisis is negatively impacting East New York. After reviewing the merits of this project and thoughtful recommendations from various stakeholders regarding this development, ADNY supports the Innovative Urban Village Project for the aforementioned reasons. One important factor to consider is that the project has received overwhelming support from Community Board Five during its review at the ULEP stage. The project received a vote of 22 to 1. A favorable vote of this magnitude clearly shows an endingness and willingness to support this project. Another important component of this project is that nearly all 2,000 new housing units will be set aside for affordable housing. So this project puts an emphasis on housing low and middle income residents. Perspective for residents who earn between 30 to 80% of the A, AMI will have priority access. There is also a component of this project which advance homeownership, and it is important because it will allow East New Yorkers to de- develop generational wealth and equity through homeownership. Lastly, the addition of 24/7 daycare may develop those residents will meet the needs of family, non-standard work schedules, and parents working nights. ADNY supports the development of the Innovative Urban Village Project. This project encourages economic growth, sustainable housing, innovative childcare options for New Yorkers. We encourage the City Planning Commission to consider this comprehensive value add of this project to this Brooklyn community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Questions? I don't see any. Uh, let me just say, we are getting near the end of the public hearing. We have a few more speakers left uh on this matter. So if you have not registered to speak, but have decided during the course of this hearing that you would like to, now is the time to register. Again, you can find instructions on how to register online, uh whether online or via the phone at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. Our next speaker is Cynthia McKnight? Cynthia McKnight?
Do we have Ms. McKnight in the room? Yep, yes, we do.
Yes.
Hello?
Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, I'm just at the Park Slope Co-op, so I'm just stepping out so I could take my mask off.
Take your time.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cynthia McKnight, President of Community Education Council 13, CEC 13, and Union Leader AFGE Local 913 of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. I'm here to support the Christian Cultural Center's Innovative Urban Village Project in the East New York neighborhood of Brooklyn, New York. Based on my engagement with the Christian Cultural Center on their project, I believe its development is beneficial to East New York and its residents. First and foremost, the Christian Cultural Center is an outstanding, longstanding community member who cares deeply for East New York residents. This project will create housing opportunities for families of various sizes and incomes. Their plans call for upwards of 2,000 units of housing, all of which will be income restricted, ranging from 30% to 100% of AMI, and 200 units of which will be set aside for seniors, our most vulnerable population. They will also afford local entrepreneurs and business owners opportunities to open businesses and employ their neighbors. Secondly, the center's plan to operate, to incorporate a host of services and amenities that will not only serve the residents of new buildings, but the broader community as well. This will benefit residents from across the street as well as the broader East New York neighborhood. These services include, as was so, GED programs, 24/7 childcare, career counseling, vocational training, a performing arts center, and open green spaces, to name a few. I also urge the approval of the Innovative Urban Village proposal for the following reasons. As a person who grew up in Linden Houses in East New York, I know the importance of safe and affordable housing. As I said before, the Innovative Urban Village Project will create a total of 20, 2,050 units of housing. And the plans are all for these housing units to be income-based and affordable. A large portion of these units will be reserved for households with lower incomes, ensuring that our East New York community members can afford to move in. Um, this, and then in closing, I look forward to continuing to work with Christian Cultural Center and Gotham Organization on this project and furthering the needs and aspiration of East New York residents. I urge um you to vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. Uh, just hang on. Are there questions for Ms. McKnight?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I do have a question.
Commissioner Osorio?
Uh, thank you so much uh for your testimony. As, as somebody who uh knows the community well and, and somebody who just highlighted the relationship between the project and the existing neighbors, I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about the, where you see the contribution or the impact? I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about the, where you see the contribution or the impact of the project on, on traffic patterns and pedestrian pathways? This is something that has been sort of highlighted in previous comments, and I was, I was wondering if you can tell us a little bit what you think.
Um, when I had those discussions, that wasn't an issue. What I get from a lot of parents, there's a lot of the parents and my family members from East New York and Brownsville, they really stress the need for affordable housing and the opportunity to have homeownership. Traffic, yes, is an issue when it comes to schools and the safety, but those issues were addressed, so that's not a concern of mine. The more importance is that a lot of our families can't afford to stay in Brooklyn.
Thank you. I appreciate your response.
Other questions for Ms. McKnight? Thank you, Ms. McKnight.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Wilkins. Bill Wilkins.
Yes, let me try to start my video.
There you are.
Okay, first, as stated, my name is Bill Wilkins. I'm the Executive Director of the LDC of East New York, East Brooklyn Bid, East Brooklyn Housing Development Corporation. By virtue of these multiple affiliates, provides me with a unique perspective on both economic and housing development. Additionally, not only have I worked in East New York for the past, for the last twenty-one years, I've also lived in East New York for over three decades. The LDC has been in service for the East Brooklyn community for over forty-plus years, and I've managed economic development programs for New York City Department of Small Business Services, Economic Development Corporation. We're the first in place industrial park, New York State Empire Zone Development Zones Program. The mission of the LDC is to grow businesses, change lives, and strengthen communities. Additionally, the East Brooklyn Business Improvement District is one of the oldest bids in New York City and the first industrial bid in New York City. Lastly, as Director of East Brooklyn Housing Development Corporation, I've been a not-for-profit partner in developing over five hundred units of housing in East New York and the HDFC partner of a hundred and eight units currently in construction at fifteen-ten Broadway. Over the last three years and on several occasions, as a local stakeholder and expert in economic and housing development, I've been briefed on this proposed development. I've reviewed, analyzed, critiqued, and edified the Innovative Urban Village, and today without hesitation or reservation, I fully support this project for multiple reasons, and submit it has the potential to be the gold standard of local bottom-up development. Um, as we know, the Manhattanization of Brooklyn has finally reached the shores of East New York, and it's incumbent that the residents, the businesses, and institutions that are indigenous to East New York develop and shape the impending transformation. This project is homegrown and reflective of our local needs. Secondly, this project is well-conceived and checks all of the boxes centered on improving the quality of life in our community. Note, East New York is void of having a performing arts center, and be mindful, the arts speak to the soul. To this point, Krang's recently released an article that reflects cultural institutions play a major role in reducing crime, and as many of the commissioners know, the Seventy-Fifth precinct has always been an impact precinct. Lastly, it is about time and passed due that representatives that have a proven track record and a commitment to our community be given the opportunity to transform lives. I submit, we must move away from top-down development. More importantly, we need to stop letting outsiders, interlopers, and poachers exploit our urban villages and fully embrace local bottom-up development. This project definitely brings the secret sauce to a much-deserving community.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. The timing is pristine. Uh, questions for Mr. Wilkins?
Yes, Vice Chair, I have a question.
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkins, I wanted to start by first acknowledging your leadership. It's really a privilege to hear your perspective on the project, and you know, I, as somebody who we, has been, as you said, working for decades in the community, but specifically with and on behalf of industrial businesses. I wanted to repeat a question that I raised earlier in the, in the, in the, in the hearing about where do you see, I mean, I think that we all agree that there's a lot of opportunities, but where do you see the contribution has, have a conversations evolved in specific commitments or specific plans to address either through workforce development or any other opportunities, support to the industrial businesses there, not just in terms of a, the physical amenities and so forth, but in terms of the potential economic development of these investments in, in supporting those businesses and or creating affordable housing, connecting the affordable housing opportunities here with, with the people who work across the street from the site. That's the first question. And then the second question has to do, again, with another question that I raised, which is concerns that have come up in terms of the impact of the project on traffic patterns and so forth, and given your expertise in terms of the industrial area and so forth, I was wondering if you can help us understand that.
Okay, um, well, first, I mean, your question is spot on. Um, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart. By being an industrial service provider, in our industrial park, one of our core industries happens to be companies in the buildings trade. And maybe ten or fifteen years ago, some of the owners, and these are tried and true middle-market clients, entities that are two and three-generation-old, family-run businesses. And we started to see an increase in amount of housing starts and development in East New York taking place in our backyard. And they raised their hand and said, well, how can we participate? From my vantage point, it makes sense because we're just a few blocks away from the project site. So it helps to, to your point about traffic and congestion, it helps to reduce congestion and also pollution. But one of our core industries happens to be companies in the buildings trade. We have tried and true suppliers, whether it be Lewis Schiffman for electrical, SOCO for plumbing, Lego International for plumbing. We have the last woodmill in New York City. We have cement manufacturers. We have our steel supplier has been in business since the nineteen thirties, so we have a proliferation of steel fabrication. But the way it works is to have a meet the developer. And by meeting the developer and then giving us an opportunity to bid on some of the projects and secure some of the contracts then helps to increase their revenue. And remember, these businesses hire locally, who then individuals spend locally, so we're able to create a circular economy and/or a micro-stimulus plan. For example, if the project budget is, let's say, four hundred million, and even if a hundred million dollars goes to local businesses and then they spend locally, we have now created a project that's north of a half a billion dollars. So it's just taking common sense to high places to tried-and-true businesses that have a local to the project site, which makes sense on multiple reasons that hire locally, who then spend locally, and makes us actually a unique community. Now, the difficulty becomes that, you know, developers and general contractors, they already have their team. And it only happens when we have that sincere participation, which has been demonstrated by this project and a willingness to change the model, to do things differently, and to empower and change our community, because for a lot of people that are presented today, this is a legacy project. This is a transformative project. Just by definition of being an innovative urban village makes it inviting to a community that is definitely in need of this type of anchor development and to extend the opportunities to some of the local industrial businesses that you've mentioned. To your second point, as it relates to traffic, several years ago, when Congressman Towns was in office, he got a large grant to improve our byways and our transportation networks for vehicular traffic. And, and I'll tell you a secret, this very, I've been in the community over thirty years. There are very few times in which we have traffic congestion. Now, what's going to have to be looked at, I think, with a deeper dive, and I know they've studied this, is now there's going to be an increase in pedestrian traffic. There really isn't a lot of pedestrian traffic. When you're going up Pennsylvania Avenue, heading south to the Belt Parkway, or coming north from the Belt Parkway and traffic on Flatlands Avenue, there are not a lot of pedestrians crossing, and by the design and openness, I think it creates some safety mechanisms for even our pedestrians.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses and encourage you to encourage the developer or the applicant to, to reflect or make more explicit some of the initiatives that you hinted to and the need for additional studies to make sure that that's accomplished, because that's a great vision. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Wilkins from the commission? I don't think I see any. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker is Angela White, to be followed by Sharon Haynes. Angela White. I see you.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the City Planning Commission. My name is Dr. Angela White, and I have been a member of Christian Cultural Center for over fifteen years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you regarding my support of the Innovative Urban Village being proposed by Christian Cultural Center. The proposed urban village will not only provide new income-based affordable housing for over two thousand income-based residences, but it will also give the community numerous purpose-built services. As an educator for over thirty-five years, I know the value of providing not only young people, but adults of all ages, the opportunity to experience the cultural arts. And this will be accomplished with the inclusion of the Performing Arts Center for Theater, Dance, Music, Film, Lectures, and Panel Discussions, reflecting the local community. It should come as no surprise that I am a huge supporter of the vision that calls for enhanced economic opportunity through education. The urban village will provide supports to primary and secondary students in addition to the much-needed vocational training and career counseling. I want you to consider the benefits that will support the needs of the community. The urban village will support health facilities and essential services that will have the potential of providing twenty-four-seven days a week childcare, senior citizen programming, and walk-in medical services. We know that people living in connected communities feel healthier and are happier about their lives. This will also be accomplished with necessary shops, dining options, destinations that the community will be able to rely on, such as fresh grocery stores and accessible retail. The urban village will also provide services, much-needed services for seasoned seniors, members of our senior community in number of ways, including education, senior citizen programming. It's important that we don't forget our seniors. It's important that we engage our senior community. The power of community involvement is well-recognized by researchers and can help combat the sense of isolation that is often felt by our seniors. And finally, the young people of this community will benefit, not only from the twenty-four-hour daycare, but a new community playground, recreational and athletic facilities, and accessible open green spaces, which will only strengthen positive engagement of our youth and adults. I urge you to approve the proposed Innovative Urban Village. Please consider the necessary affordable housing that is so desperately needed, the welcoming space for the entire community, the numerous benefits, and the positive experiences that will be provided to the community residents of East New York. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. White. Questions? Questions? Don't see any. Thank you again.
Thank you.
It looks like our final speaker is Sharon Haynes. Sharon Haynes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thanks, Commissioners, to you for this opportunity to testify this afternoon. My name is Sharon Haynes. I am a community member and a member of Christian Cultural Center. This project is vital to the community. If you know anything about East New York, you know that it's an underserved community. There are specific needs to be filled. Community members are desperately in need of quality housing, jobs, good commerce, not just large fast food chains, daycare, et cetera. This community of people, they want to thrive, not just merely survive. This project, I am in full support of. I know this project will support and fill many of the needs of the community members. Prior to December nineteen ninety-nine, when CCC moved to the Flatlands area and the East New York area, there was an infestation of drugs and prostitution in that community. I know it firsthand for myself because I used to walk through those, that community. CCC has brought much-needed revitalization to the area with its face-based organization. This project, this urban village project, will further revitalize the area. Revitalization would include our community members who are most deserving to live in a community that provides the resources that are much-needed and increase their quality of life for the people of that community. Some of the things that the urban village will bring, as I said, revitalization to the community. It's a welcome improvement. Housing affordability. As we already know, that housing in Brooklyn is not affordable to everyone. So this will provide affordable housing to the community members because it involves mixed housing. There will be economic opportunities. There will be educational opportunities, such as was mentioned before, the trade school, which is a necessary option, especially for those who are re-entering the community. Also, commerce. Entrepreneurship, small business owners would be welcome to have businesses in this community, in the urban village. Also, inclusion, ensuring that people from the community are fully considered as it relates to the benefits that are available to them. And this, I know for a fact, will happen. Ultimately, building generational wealth. It's an urban village. Okay, sustainability. Parking, which is a major concern here in Brooklyn. There will be parking for, for additional parking that will be available.
Ms. Haynes, you want to just conclude with a sentence or two?
Ms. Haynes, you may unmute yourself to do that. Sorry. I hope she.
She there? No.
She is still here. Sorry about that.
Yep. You want to just conclude, Ms. Haynes?
Yes, thank you so kindly. The urban village is a comprehensive plan. I also believe that it will be a model plan for future communities. So I implore you to approve this project. In doing so, you will affirm the community that their interest and their well-being is of utmost importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Haynes? I don't believe I see any. Thank you again, Ms. Haynes.
You're most welcome.
Are there any additional speakers registered, Ryan, at this point?
Uh, there are no further speakers on this item registered.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the item?
Any further? No, doesn't appear so.
Okay, before I close the hearing, I just want to indicate that calendar numbers twenty-three through twenty-six, calendar numbers twenty-three through twenty-six, which we have just considered, the record will remain open through Tuesday, September sixth, for written submissions on this item. Are there any other items before us today?
No, Vice Chair, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the Upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's website or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two.
All righty. There being no further business before us, the remote meeting held today is adjourned. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and attention.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
You have a great day.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.